Good evening, everybody. We're gonna start. Welcome, especially to our students. We have a lot of students here in the audience tonight. This is our regular meeting of the school committee of the town of Foxborough. It's November 6th, 2017. Apologize for being a few minutes behind. We're just dealing with little technical difficulties that we will continue to iron out, but we're gonna get started so we don't run too long. Normally, we start with visitors and approval of minutes. And I'm gonna read the agenda as well, but before I do any of that, we have a couple of new faces at our table up here who are not sixth grade. They're a little bit older, but they were sixth grade in Foxborough one time. I want to welcome Matt and Kendall to our table. Do you guys wanna just introduce yourself to the community, both here in the room and also watching on TV? Your moms, I'm sure, are excited with videoing.
Sure, she'll be very proud. Alright, so my name's Matt Sharkey. I'm a junior here at Foxborough High. And so this is my first school committee meeting, as I'm sure plenty of you probably shared that with me. And I'm here with my friend Kendall, who's also a junior. And we're just excited to get on the board and just see where it goes.
Welcome.
I'm also a junior at Foxborough High School. Matt and I are heavily involved in student council, which is how we got into this. And we're really excited to be here and give the student body FHS representation at these meetings, and thank you guys for having us.
Thank you for volunteering attendance.
Oh, of course.
Excited to welcome our newest members. So, as the student representatives, you don't do official voting. The five, I don't even vote. The five committee members vote. But you certainly should weigh in whenever you have something that you wanna offer. We love the student perspective and happy to have you here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt and Kendall. And Ms. Spinelli, I happen to know these two for many years, so we'll keep a close eye on them.
Necessary.
Okay, so our agenda tonight is, again, we're gonna recognize any visitors. We're gonna approve some minutes, and then we have two teaching and learning highlights tonight. We have the sixth grade house challenge. Is that right, you guys? Okay, with grade six teachers and students. And then if we can get it working, we're gonna have a food service video after that that we're very proud of. We have some overnight travel to approve for our high school students. And then we have a number of our school academic leaders who are gonna help us review our 2017 MCAS and baseline and benchmarks report and review of results. We then will get a social-emotional learning fall update. We're gonna do our fourth reading of policy GBGE about domestic violence leave. We then have some excitement mid-meeting. We're gonna talk about the assistant superintendent recommendation. We have a new superintendent who's starting at the beginning of the new year, and we are ready for our recommendations on who will take her position as the assistant superintendent. Ms. Spinelli will take us through the Bye County Collaborative amended agreement for school committees. We're fortunate to have a couple of donations to accept tonight. Continued for the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund and also one for the Taylor Elementary School. And then we're gonna take up other matters. So before we get to our special visitors, the grade six group, do we have any other visitors here who wanna be recognized tonight before we start our proceedings? Do you guys see anyone out there who's raising their hand and wants to come up? I don't. Do you? No, alright. We'll keep going then. Alright, so for the committee, we have the regular meeting minutes of October 16th.
I didn't have any changes to these, Mr. Gardner?
Nor did I. Anybody else?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 16th.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero. Thank you, Janet.
Before we move on, I wanted to apologize to the committee. We did have an executive session on October 16th, and it's my responsibility to get those meeting minutes to Janet, and I completely forgot to do it. So, they aren't included in this packet, but she has them now, and we will have them at the next meeting, so we can get them out in a timely manner. But that was my fault, and I will apologize to the committee for that.
I don't think an apology's necessary. We don't have to get them out immediately, right at the very next meeting, so you're okay.
I know, but we have made a good effort to be timely in our approval and release of our executive session minutes, and I did drop the ball, so I just wanted to get that out there.
I would say, historically, this committee has been extremely timely in approving and releasing the minutes from all executive sessions in the years that I can recall, most recently. So, you have nothing to apologize for. You're already doing pretty well on that.
I'll take it.
No worries, and thank you, Tina. We'll see them at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
I think what I'd like to suggest, just to give Dr. Berdus a little bit more time, Ms. Myers-Pacla, would you feel comfortable if we moved up the overnight travel approval?
Sure.
And I'm gonna ask our sixth grade students and teachers to hang tight just a few more minutes. Can you guys do that for us? Alright. We will do, for you guys, we will do another agenda item first, okay? While we're trying to get the videos and all working.
We don't wanna miss out on your great PowerPoint either.
Does that sound alright?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good, thank you.
It's nice to see a couple of students that missed the past few meetings, or I am, anyway. So, we're just presenting here for you tonight the overnight travel that we have for the school year. The one piece I just wanna make sure that it is on is the DC.
Yes, it is. They have the updated one.
Updated version, thank you. At the time when this was going to Central, not all of the particulars were in regarding that particular field trip for the DC for the History Club. But right now, it's pretty set. Sometimes there's that, you know, little bit of movement that could take place. But we have our French exchange, our Spanish exchange that will be coming. Our Student Council Conference that takes place each year in Hyannis. The Music Festival, the History Club to DC, DECA, the state competition. Our Educational Theater Guild Drama Festival. DECA, again, we are hoping that we will continue to qualify and make our way to Atlanta this year. And the Festival of Music Tour in DC. Essentially, Ellington, again, we will keep our fingers crossed for our selection into that. And IF, again, with the track team. That's always again, whether qualifying in. And then our basketball teams that will be heading to Florida in December. So, an exciting time for the teams as well.
Any comments, Diana, from your perspective as principal, about any of the trips?
No, I just think that they're exciting opportunities for our students. Some of them, in some cases, I don't wanna say that we just expect them to become those trips that we have, but it's always so wonderful to have. And our French just left us, and I continue to say that I thoroughly enjoy the travel programs that can happen, but for us to be able to have exchanges that are school to school and family to family are certainly something that we should be very proud of, I think, as a district and as a school in supporting those. So, again, we say thank you to those, and then, again, the opportunity for history to come alive with the History Club and the music. It's just, it's a wonderful opportunity that students do have.
I know, I was impressed when I was reviewing tonight's material, the length of this list.
Yes.
And I know at this table, we've been very supportive of students getting off campus and going and exploring the world.
Absolutely.
Which you've been very supportive of as well, so.
It's always, you know, the learning is inside the classroom, and that's so important, too. But the learning that can go on outside of the classroom is equally as important, and I think a wonderful contribution to what does go on inside the classroom, too.
Any questions on any of the items?
Do we know where the Spanish will be going?
I don't have that at the moment, so they're still working on that, so. As soon as we know, we will let that go.
I just said, I think it's a great list, and I will note that all of the things that are, you know, qualified, I think we qualified for last year and the year before. So, it's a really great list of programs. I did wanna point out, I know we've had this conversation at the table with regard to the European travel. Currently, there is a State Department travel alert for Europe. It is set to expire November 30th, and hopefully, there won't be any further incidents that require further. But I would like us to continue to monitor that and certainly make sure that our students are enrolled in the step, the...
Insurance. The insurance.
No, well, with the State Department.
Oh, with the State Department.
The safe travel enrollment program, so that there is, if there were to be an incident while our kids were abroad, they would all be accounted for through the State Department.
Yes.
And, I mean, I think that's something families have to do, but as we move forward in the process with our kids going and keeping parents informed, I just wanna be sure that we are making thoughtful decisions at the table when we do this. So, I think it's a great opportunity. I know our kids are very excited about going, but we do need to be cognizant of what's going on with the State Department as well.
And that's internal, too, inside the country, because goodness knows what just happened in Texas.
Yep. It is. It absolutely is, but, yeah, exactly.
Good point, Tina. Any other comments? Kendall, Matt, does it make sense to you guys that we approve all this overnight travel? I don't know if you guys have had a chance to participate in any of the overnight stuff, but...
Yeah, I think we both have, and we're planning to do C-MASK with the student council in Hyannis, so we definitely benefit from all of these trips.
Yeah, it's definitely a good thing to have these programs in place. It really helps out the student body.
Alright. Anyone like to make a motion that we approve?
I'd like to make that motion, that we approve the overnight travel plans.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous approval? Thank you, Ms. Myers-Pacla.
Thank you all. Very much appreciate it.
Wish the students safe and wonderful travels.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Amy, do you think you're getting any closer, or you want us to take another topic?
We have a new laptop. Everyone died, so...
Alright.
Oh, your laptop died.
See, it's just like, it's just like last week with the power outage. Sometimes you can live without technology. Although, you at the Ahern didn't lose power, so I shouldn't be talking about that. Sometimes you can't have technology.
How did they not lose power?
Just your different areas of town, they always have power.
I did not know that.
So, sometimes, you know, you have to be flexible and creative and do something else. And sometimes you just sit and wait for your laptop to arrive.
Debbie, just to give Amy another minute or two.
Sure.
Would the Byco topic be something we could take?
Yes, actually, that's not a long one, so I'd be happy to do that right now.
So, Amy, we'll give you a few more minutes. Take your time, and we'll cover... And sixth graders, you guys alright hanging out a little longer?
You're getting a little more flavor of the business part of the meeting.
Are we missing anybody's bedtime? I don't wanna mess that up. We're alright so far?
Michelle McCarthy.
Oh, Mrs. McCarthy. They all had time.
Okay, so the By County Collaborative, as you know, the Byco Collaborative is the area regional special education collaborative that we are a member of. It is governed by a Board of Directors, which are the sitting superintendents in all of those districts, so I sit on the board. And what's before you tonight is an amendment of the collaborative agreement. And basically, what prompted the discussion? We've had this discussion, actually, at many Byco board meetings until we had resolution in the October board meeting. And it was prompted by two other communities wanting to join. So, that's Hope Dale and Oxbridge wanted to join the community, the collaborative. There are benefits to them. Over time, they're paying currently non-member tuition, and over the course of three years, they can get to paying a member district, but I'll talk about that a little bit. So, at the October, at the October 12th meeting of our Board of Directors, we voted to allow those two in, and we voted in this new amendment to the agreement. There are three basic parts to the amendment. So, the first step was that it had to be voted in by the majority of the board, which it was. The second is that all of the member district school committees have to consider these three sections to the amended agreement. The first is membership, that you are gonna take a vote to allow the other two districts in. You will take, hopefully, another vote for or against changing the non-member tuition to a surcharge of plus 20% over a member rate to plus 25%. So, this allows the collaborative to take in a little bit more tuition from districts who don't join and just want to use the programs on a individual, sort of a à la carte basis, if you will. So, it says to change 20% to 25%, so the agreement reads as follows. "The board shall establish the fee not to exceed 25% of member district's tuition or service charges on an annual basis and may vary by program." The third part is about the procedure and the timeline for admitting new member districts. I'll read it, and then I'll explain it. Add the following to the amendment. During the first year of membership, a newly admitted district will pay a 15% surcharge on all the programs and services. During the second year of membership, the surcharge will be reduced to 10%. During the third year, the surcharge will be reduced to 5%. The following years, member district rates will apply. The new member district will have full voting rights beginning in the first year of membership. So, in practicality, what that means for the two new member districts is you can't just ask to join and suddenly you're paying the low rate, 'cause we've already budgeted and approved a budget based on what we thought we were taking in through the collaborative, through all this... I would count them up, but there's about 20, 18 or 19 member districts? So, we budget for what we expect to take in. So, you don't want somebody to join, and then suddenly they're paying, you know, a lot less than we had anticipated. So, what this will really do for the two new members is their membership rate won't start till July 1st and next fiscal year. This year, they're still paying non-member rates, even if everybody's voting now. Starting on July 1st, they will pay a reduced surcharge of 15% rather than the current 20 they're paying. The next year will go down to 10, and then to 5, which allows the budget for the Byco collaborative that we control to be able to take on the added, the reduced revenue and account for it in the budget process. So, that's it. So, your vote is to amend the collaborative agreement on the part of the Foxborough School Committee, and then assuming, the last step is assuming the majority of the member districts, vote the amendment in, then it will become effective on July 1st.
And your recommendation is that we...
To do it, is to vote in the affirmative to all three of those sections, the changes in those sections. So, I do have the entire agreement with the changes in red, if somebody wanted it, but it actually is word for word what it says there. It just shows it in the context of the entire agreement.
Any questions for Debbie? I think on Byco, because we have so much less involvement than you do, I think we just rely heavily on your continued recommendation, so. At least, that's how I feel.
I'll make a motion to approve, accept, the changes to the amended collaborative agreement as presented by Mrs. Spinelli.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie.
The collaborative will be thrilled to get that confirmation. You can imagine how long it takes for so many different school committees to vote it and then see if they have the majority, and hopefully, give the good news to the new member districts. Thank you.
And I am signing the required school committee chair approval as voted as we speak. Because Janet has got us right on top of things.
Great. Thank you. Ooh, look at that. Good timing.
Excellent timing.
I see some familiar children. Alright, while you're getting that going, 'cause I see the beginning of it up.
Let me interrupt you for one second, 'cause I don't see a smiling assistant superintendent over there yet.
You don't?
Do you need a few more minutes, Amy? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, let's see. So, we have here tonight some sixth grade teachers. Kelly Wade, so you, Ms. Wade, if you just... Thank you. Alicia Campolone, Rachel Westgate, and Amberribe Pizzatelli. So, they and their wonderful students are here to show you what they did for their sixth grade house challenge. And I'm just gonna say the names. I think I have the names of all the kids who are here, and I see that the camera is on you right now, so if you just kinda wave a little bit, and then I'm gonna ask you to move your chairs up. Are you ready? Ella Campbell. Alright, just if you hear your name, wave. Kaitlin Dunneen. Jalen Ashford. Lydia Stone. Mackenzie Burton. Lexi Genere. Did I say it right?
Jenner.
Okay.
Jenner.
Genere.
Sorry.
I should've asked before. Ellie Smith. Liam Hannan. Nathan Erman. Livio McCollum. And, oh, let's hope, Felila Dham. Did I say it right?
Felihah.
Felihah, okay. Well, I usually do better than that, because I usually, when I'm talking to you before the meeting, I ask you if I'm confused. But just goes to show, I'll try again, and I'll persevere.
Did we miss anybody? We get everybody.
Did I miss anyone?
Alright, good job.
Alright, so, would you bring your chairs up to the guest table, as I explained before? And maybe put... So, let's see what I can put in charge. Jalen, will you move the two microphones to the two corners so that it's closer to the students? And great, teachers know exactly what you're doing, so that's easy. Oh, it doesn't move too easily, does it? Okay, that's good.
Yeah, it's good.
Alright, so, teachers, are you starting, or are you leaving it all up to the kids?
So, we're gonna have an introduction.
Okay.
So, we just wanna say thank you for having us, first of all. We're all really excited to be here. We're really pumped about this year's sixth grade house challenge. Basically, from the teacher's perspective, we kinda got together last year, actually, and we talked about our second step program and how we really wanna build it up and make it a little bit better. So, the goal of this year in our sixth grade house challenge is to really build a really respectful community at the Ahern, which everyone knows, we already have an awesome community at the Ahern. We really wanted to build that up. So, we developed our sixth grade house challenge. We meet as a grade level once a month, and every month, there's a word of the month that we review in our assembly, and we do some house highlights, all the awesome things that we're seeing. Some of our words of the month, really, we kicked off the year with our house challenge team building day. And a lot of our words really came out in some of the things that we did on that day. So, some of the words of the month, we started the year with respect, because obviously, that's really important, right, guys? And then from there, we went on to collaboration. This month, we're talking about citizenship. From there, we're gonna go on to things like empathy and maturity and communication, and all of these great things that are important for us to take the time to talk about and practice. So, we kicked off the year with our team building day with lots of awesome things that I'm gonna turn it over to the kids to say a little bit more about.
Yes, so Ellie's going to give us an introduction on what team building day was.
Yeah.
Yes, give them.
Good evening. We learned about collaboration and teamwork on our team building day. In October, we demonstrated team building by... We demonstrated team building. We gathered in our houses and came up with a house name, cheer, and a mascot. Then we got our groups and did 16 building activities with our groups. Before lunch, we had an assembly with the entire sixth grade to talk about how the day is going so far, our group's strength and weaknesses, et cetera. We got back with our houses and talked about how our groups did well and what our groups did well in, and what we struggled with more in depth. Thank you.
So, one of the big parts of team building day is after the kids participated in one of the team building activities, we got together and we had a debrief on how the activity went and how they were able to practice the team building skills during that activity. So, Liam's gonna give you an idea of what those debriefs were like.
Some of the things our group talked about on team building day was communicating and perseverance. The way we started off with communicating at the beginning of the year was just everyone talking at once. Now, everyone takes turns sharing their ideas. For perseverance, at the beginning of the year, everyone just gave up on what they were doing. Now, we find more problems to solve those problems. I mean, more ideas to solve those problems. And that's why they call it team building day.
Good job.
So, as Ellie mentioned, halfway through the day, we kinda get together as a grade level to have an assembly. So, we are having those assemblies once a month, and Lexi has some more information for you on what we do during those assemblies. You can stand up and move forward.
So, at each of the assemblies, we go over our points from the last month and talk about the new word for the month. And this month is citizenship. And we also, each class, the teachers, talk about three of the students and recognize three of the students from each house for demonstrating the word of the month.
Excellent. Good job.
Okay, so, that brings us... We have a couple of questions that the kids prepared answers for. So, the first question is, what was the highlight of team building day for you? Who wants to start off with that one? So, the first question, number one. Go for it.
The highlight of team building day for me was doing the mind maze, because it involved a lot of teamwork and was fun to do and to help others.
Who's the other person to answer question one?
The highlight of team building day for me was a ball toss. We kept on dropping the ball and messing up, but we all cheered each other on and had a good time.
So, our second question was, at the end of the day, what skills did your group show improvement in?
At the end of the day, we showed improvement in communication, and we took our turns talking so that everybody could hear each other, and we completed our tasks by listening to our classmates' advice.
Our group started the day off not really listening to each other's opinions, and after we had a few debriefs, we realized that not everybody's voices were being heard. So, as the day went on, and at the end of the day, we made sure that everybody's voices were being heard.
Okay, third question, what was most challenging for you?
The birthday lineup, because nobody would pay attention to what other people had started and decided to create their own ideas. And nobody would pay attention to that either. The marble challenge, because my group, we kept on dropping the barbels, so it was making us really frustrated, so, and we only, and we started doing our own ideas, but not really listening to each other, but just arguing, which made the job much more harder.
Our last question, how do the things we did on team building day relate to your day-to-day life?
When we're older and are in situations like having jobs, we may have to work in groups, and it will work best when we have effective communication.
I said that we worked on things like communication, teamwork, and letting everyone's voices be heard. And every day, we communicate by talking to people and doing things around the classroom. We also were letting everyone's voice be heard by listening to friends and teachers in class all the time. And teamwork is something that you do with a partner in class or simply playing the sport at recess after school, and those were all the different things that we were covering on team building day.
Well said.
And so, to finish up, I think we were gonna actually, if there's time, can we do a quick sample of one of the activities that they did?
Yes, please.
Mackenzie, did you wanna explain? You wanna explain? Okay, so Mackenzie's gonna explain, and so it had different facilitators, the teachers and some other staff members at the Ahern facilitated all these team building activities. And so, Mackenzie is gonna be our facilitator for the hula hoop challenge. So, who's doing the hula hoop challenge? Alright, so if you guys maybe wanna do a little circle right here. I think this is probably gonna be in space. And Mackenzie's gonna explain the rules of the hula hoop challenge, and then you guys can kinda talk a little bit about what was hard about this and then how you were able to achieve the goal. How does that sound?
So, we have our hula hoop, and we have a group of people that are swinging around it. And we're only allowed to use both of our fingers, our pointer and our middle, and we can't let go. We have to keep them on at all times. And our goal was to lower it down altogether so that it touched the ground, so... And you can't use it, though.
You can't use it, though.
So, you guys...
That's not easy.
And we noticed that sometimes, when we got stressed out or nervous, we tended to lift it up instead of lower it down to the ground. And we didn't wanna do that, 'cause that's why we just still lowered it to the ground.
So, it seemed like a pretty simple activity. Did you think it was really simple when we were doing it?
Yeah, I thought it was really simple, but it took a while to figure out.
And one of the things that we talked about is that sometimes, if you just relax and take a deep breath and focus and work together, then you can do it. How many tries? Do you remember how many tries it took your group to do it?
My group, it took three.
You took three tries? So, this, that was like one of the fastest hula hoop challenges I've ever done. So, that's just one of the types of activities that we did over the course of the day. And Mackenzie, you did a really nice job making the point that sometimes when we get stressed out, we do the opposite. We get tense, and everyone was pushing the hula hoop upward, even though you were trying to drop it to the floor instead. And when we took a deep breath, took a timeout, talked about what we needed to do, everyone was able to bring it to the ground, so.
Is that it?
Yes. Alright, so, unless, did anyone have anything else that they want, hoping that they could add to the presentation? I think that's all we have for...
Well, we might have a few questions for you guys. Are you guys up for some questions?
Yes.
Alright. Anybody have any questions?
Well, I don't have a question, but no wonder Mrs. Abrams was bragging about the grade house and the sixth grade house challenge.
I've done that challenge before, 'cause I'm a camp counselor, and we do like leadership stuff like that all the time, and that's super hard. I think that that took my group, and I'm 17, I think that took our group like five times. So, kudos to you for doing it. It's really tricky. But I think it's great that you guys are working on stuff like this, because, especially in high school, in high school, and I know that as you guys are moving up through middle school, you're probably realizing this too, that collaboration and working with other people, especially on group projects, and just, you know, every day at school and every day in your lives, the better you can effectively communicate with someone, the easier your life is. So, I know I wish, I'm sure you wish this too, that we had something like this in sixth grade, so you can really like hone those, those skills and those experiences. And it's awesome that you guys are doing this as sixth graders. That's really cool.
I, I have a question. Do you guys, did you guys think this was boring? Did you really wish you were like practicing math or reading or something? Not at all? Are you sure?
There was no point in the day that I personally thought that it was boring, even when everyone was getting very mad and aggravated with each other and like yelling at each other where it did actually get a point where people were struggling so bad that they were screaming at each other. At no point was it boring because it, sometimes it was funny when that would happen and sometimes it wasn't, 'cause you would be the one getting aggravated. And I didn't think it would be boring because all the, everything that we did was fun. And it was just, it was a good way to spend a school day.
Wow.
You are very well spoken.
That was a great job.
Also because we, none of us really got homework. We did do it.
Yeah, we did not, we did no work besides stuff.
But you know what? I can see how this is gonna build your own confidence in communicating, problem solving when things don't go right, either for the group or for you individually. And what do you do about that? And really growing your own skills to confront that situation and take control of it yourself, confidently, knowing that you can do that and not rely on others for help. So I think that's really great. I'm very impressed.
You have to remember these lessons and bring them forward.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
So, we're only three months into the school year now. I can't wait to see how this is going to play out when you met once, you're meeting once a month. So by the end of the school year, I mean, if you were this impressive in November, I can only imagine what it's gonna be like by June. It's fantastic.
So is this happening in any of the other grades or is it just sixth grade?
Just sixth grade.
You're the lucky ones, huh?
Yeah, it was only...
Because that, um, 'cause the word of the month for October was collaboration, so they wanted, and everyone on a field trip.
Where'd you go?
We went to, um, Camp Leopold, a wolf's course, and that involved a lot of teamwork.
Yeah.
Yeah, you had to pull, for like the swing, you had to pull each other and then like when somebody said like, "Stop, this is good," like everybody would just stop instead of like doing it, instead of making it.
So what was September's word of the month? 'Cause this month is citizenship, right?
The first was...
Oh, it's factory.
You know, though, one of your teachers, I don't know if it was Ms. Wade or Ms. Campbell alone, said at the beginning that this was about taking the second step program that we use, which is one of our social emotional learning, which coincidentally, we're giving an update later in the meeting. So, without knowing, this is perfect timing for our later agenda item. But it's the second step program we use for, you know, to continue like caring school communities, but how you build a community and how, you know, you as a good citizen within that community and within the world. And so it's really, um, like you said, beefing up and revamping second step so it's more effective and really makes those lessons come to life. So, um, so I just wanna make that connection. So later on, it's like, wow, I didn't even realize what a perfect day to have you come and do this. Perfect.
Final thought for me. Do you guys think the world needs more collaboration and respect? Yeah, I do too. I think we should give you guys a round of applause for a great performance. Now, you know what time it is? Now it's time to go home and do your homework.
Well, you know, I know the whole sixth grade did this, but you represented your, your whole grade very well tonight. Really very well. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, you guys.
Thanks for sharing it with us.
Come again if you want to, okay? Tell your teachers.
Thank you, teachers. Yes, thank you, teachers.
Do we stay here for the next presentation?
Yeah, you're not in our way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm gonna get hungry.
So our second teaching and learning highlight.
Yeah, so this is an unusual one, um, but...
I think Mrs. Bellinger had this idea.
We had an intern in the food service department, as we do every year, and especially under Janice Watt. We have more and more interns in, in the food service, 'cause she has so many relationships with colleges and universities, with prep programs. So, um, this was a video that everyone raved about. And we thought, you know, why don't we highlight another operational aspect of our school district that's, you know, not, maybe not the traditional or the expected? We hear you?
We're just looking for a little volume. Might have to re, re, um, restart. Well, poor Dr. Burdos is getting a run for her money with technology. The technology really isn't behaving. We're gonna have to, um, you know...
Been there, done that.
Peter, is this the one I, I sent? This is the presentation for the grade?
Yeah, it's a really good video.
Is there a volume level on the speaker there, Amy?
Right there, down the bottom.
Yeah, right?
Yep, right there.
It's maxed, yeah.
It just doesn't want to.
We hold one of the mics next to it, would that help?
Well, we might have to postpone this. It's not meant to be. Is there sound coming out of the laptop, Amy?
No, there's none.
Okay, why don't we show it at the next meeting? Not critical.
Do you guys have any perspective on the food service, especially from when you were sixth graders, let's say, till now?
Yeah, the food at the Ahearn was really good. We, they did like samples all the time. It was, yeah, it was good. I think the food here is, we have a good program.
Have you seen, have you seen any changes?
Um, there was like a big revamping, like from elementary school to middle school. I think that was probably like Michelle Obama, I guess. Um, but yeah, it was really good. They have like a lot of different stuff. I think even more so at the Ahearn than at the high school. Or maybe I just don't notice it as much, but it's good.
Yeah.
All right. Well, it'll be a surprise at the next meeting.
Thanks for trying, Amy.
Something to look forward to.
Just doesn't want to. It's a little finicky.
Easier.
Postpone, I'm gonna put in my notes.
All right.
So we're gonna move to MCAS and baseline and benchmarks report?
Yes, so while she's teeing that up. So each year in the fall, we present the academic assessment results that we have through the state testing and all of our other baselines and benchmarks that we use in Foxborough, which was a system we started about ten years ago, to not just report MCAS or PACC, whatever it was, and the results, but to also report, you know, a myriad of things by which we judge student achievement. And so we, we've worked really hard, I think, over the last ten years to say, you know, we, we measure student achievement through many different lenses and not just the one you may see in the paper. So, here we are again, annual tradition in November. So the 2017 MCAS Baselines and Benchmarks Report. And we have a whole bunch of people that are gonna know how to drag their chair up already, so I don't have to mention it, led by Dr. Randy Burdos, Ms. Sue Forrest, Allison Mello cannot be with us tonight, she's home recovery, Ms. Sheena Wazluski, our English Department head, Ms. Sue Carl, math department head, Alyssa Machanek, science, Lorraine White, guidance. And actually, this is Sue Forrest's first appearance as your K-8 ELA Social Studies Director.
All right.
It's an epic night. Come on out, folks.
Oh, you have, yeah, it's right there. No, thanks.
So this part of the technology's working, thank goodness, because what we have for you is a PowerPoint of the information that you have in your packet. We put some visuals to the numbers, but anything that you see up on the slide, you do have in your packet. So what we are going to do this evening is start with some overview information as far as district demographics, and then look at our MCAS scores, and then also baseline and benchmarks. So this first slide that you have is what's right in your packet. It's really the demographics for Foxborough, looking at our enrollment for students with free reduced lunch, our special education population. This is data that we look at every year to see what trends are there. When we look at those students that are eligible for, um, free reduced lunch, that's a statistic that is also important to us when we look for our grants. As an example, Title I is based on those percentages. However, they use the state census data. So although we can see the numbers and the percentages increasing here, the state census data is always about a year behind. And so as a result of that, we end up, we ended up losing this year part of our Title I grant, which I think is important to mention, because we do see those numbers increasing. So if you look across the district wide, you can see about two percent gain and then between each of the schools, some slight increases and really decreases at just a couple of the schools. But that's information that we follow closely. It's also information that when we talk about any of our data that we look at, is to look at our drill downs, so we can look to make sure that we're serving all populations of students. Same thing as far as our special education population and looking at those trends over the several years and looking to see if it's staying consistent, if it's going down. You can see at the high school, we have about a three percent decline. And other than that, it's been pretty consistent over the last six years. Another data point that is in that first page of your packet is our ELL population. And so I've added this slide here because I think it's important to look at how our population has changed and continues to change with our English language learners. So we have fifty-nine English language learners currently. That can change daily, to be quite honest. In the last several years, the number of languages have increased. We have sixteen different languages represented by our English language learners. But over the last seven years, we've gone from ten students to fifty-nine. And so I think that's important because they bring wonderful culture to us, but it's also too, languages that are, that are new to us. As I said, sixteen different languages, some of those are different dialects within different languages. But we do see that as, um, all of the districts, quite honestly, across Massachusetts, as they see their English language learner population increasing. So another data point to look at.
I think this is a really important slide that we haven't included before. And so I'm glad you did, because I think we have, you know, Foxborough's not a big town, and I think we have a feeling that, you know, we don't change much. But we may not change much in overall population, like some dramatic growth, but we are changing. So we see the, the number of families who qualify for free reduced lunch going up. That's typical lately with economic downturns, you typically will see that. But this is significant, significant change for Foxborough.
It's a big year to your jump.
It is. So sometimes when we have to explain why we might need more support personnel, you know, last year we had another half times. We now have one and a half ELL teachers instead of the one we used to have, you know, just the single one. And these are important things to see. There are load might be more, more than is apparent when you just look at simple enrollment numbers.
And it also impacts teachers in the classroom. In addition to just this meeting the needs of the students in their classroom, they have to then go and acquire a sheltered English immersion and SEI endorsement, once they have English language learners in their classroom, which is an additional three-credit course that every teacher has to take and become endorsed as well. So there's professional development implications as well.
Does Foxborough pay for that, or do the teachers pay for that themselves?
What we have in Foxborough is a couple of different things, where we have course reimbursement, so it ends up getting paid for that way. Or if teachers want to take the course for the credits and not have graduate credits, they can have in-service credits. So the first part, we're going to kind of put this into three chunks, if you will. We're going to look at high school MCAS, and then we're going to look at grades three to eight MCAS. And we're really being very intentional tonight in separating these, because they are very different. The MCAS at the high school has stayed the same. It's been the same for twenty years. It will be changing in the near future. However, it has been the same, and it is twenty years old. However, you'll see from what is cumulative across the district, what's been taking place is some really great results in what our students are doing. So, we'll look at English Language Arts, Math and Science. But the other point here is this was a paper and pencil test, as it has been in the past for our high school students.
So, we can see here, um, our ELA numbers continue to be very good. We had ninety-seven percent of our students achieve advanced or proficient on the ELA exam. So that is above, as you can see, the ninety-one percent advanced and proficient number for the state. And the reasons, having gone through the ELA review last year, it was really apparent, Sue and I had a conversation last week, it was really apparent that the findings that came out of that review really matched kind of the numbers that we see and the results that we see on the ELA part of the MCAS. So, um, I think the focus that we've had on grammar and vocab in the classroom, the John Collins Writing Program that continues, we have started a shift toward skill building and assessments that assess the skills that students are, are coming with and learning. They have a variety, and this is the best part, they have a variety in all of their classes to practice reading and writing skills. So it's not just, they come to English and they do reading and writing, and then they forget about it for the rest of the day. As you guys know, you go to history and you write some, and you go to science and you write some, you even go to math and you write some. So you are writing and reading in all of your classes. And that, I think, really plays a big part in those fantastic numbers that we have. That's English.
All right. Good results.
Okay, so math, we had ninety-three percent at advanced and proficient this year. We were really happy with that jump. And as you can see, again, we are well above the state average. A couple of things that we think are contributing to that, we did run the boot camp again this year, which really helps some of the, the struggling students to really guarantee them passing that exam. We continue to do a lot with formative assessments across all of the classes. And as a department, we've worked really hard to be very cohesive in terms of how we are presenting material, so that students at all levels get the same challenge with the types of problems that they are presented with. I also think that the, um, the state curriculum now has been in place for several years, and we are seeing the benefits of what happened down in the elementary school and the middle school and the changes that they made as they are now rolling forward. And the students are coming to us with really strong math skills, and it, it makes a difference.
That's great.
And the other part too, just to, to point out, is when we looked at the percentage of our students that are advanced. When you look at ELA, when you look at math, and when you look at science, it's consistently high performing in that advanced. And I think that's a really important point to point out there.
You know, we, we give a lot of lip service to having created a very instructional first district with our choice of leaders and leaders and leaders. Uh, but I think this really bears it out. These are the results, so, it's very, very good.
Really, it's amazing. The numbers, the percentage of students that are advanced. And even, you know, to put some of the numbers, and people say, "Well, I still have kids." But if you look like in ELA, there's, there's only three percent of students who weren't advanced and proficient, which is a pretty high level of attainment.
Yeah.
And for, say, just for discussion purposes with classes, or say around two hundred kids, that's, that's really six students, including students with disabilities or NIPs. So just to frame it in a story, even students with NIPs, you've got six students who didn't pass, you know, on the first round. And then they will have several more times to pass, so it's really, it's amazing.
Kind of unbelievable. Okay.
Okay, and so now we have the science scores, and we are still significantly above the state average, though the numbers turned a little down this year. But we've got a complicated situation going on for science in this year in particular, because we've made the transition to teaching biology to all ninth graders, rather than some ninth graders are in biology and some ninth graders are in physical science, and then the rest of them take biology as sophomores. And so we had two-thirds of the sophomores taking the test and all of the freshmen. And it was an interesting transition. We're glad to have made it through, and I think we'll really see a much better indicator of where we are overall.
Oh, my.
At the end. Of this year.
This is the night of unexpected technology.
And then the other thing I think is important to stress is that our test is a little bit different than the test in ELAs or in math, in that they've been building skills for years and years and years in those subjects. Uh, and biology, it's a one-year test. They get nearly all the information from that core group of biology teachers who have worked really hard to make sure they're all on the same pace, all on the same page, like working together in order to analyze what works and what doesn't, to make sure all the students make appropriate progress.
That's amazing.
And it was interesting too, to really look between our ninth graders and our tenth graders, and what, and to see that their, their performance was, was right with each other, as far as their proficiency level.
That was something we were nervous going in, was, oh, are we going...
That was something we were nervous going in was, oh, are we going to see a dip in the scores because of the switch to all ninth graders and their academic maturity? But they really hang in right where they should.
Mrs. Carl, a 2% drop year to year. I wouldn't call that a statistically significant deviation, would you? No, I wouldn't worry about it, Alyssa.
You didn't really have a dip.
And so I'm just here to talk a little bit about.
Little on the spot. Let's try for another one.
About the AP numbers and I really am just reporting results. I can't take any credit for how well our AP students do. But the only thing I just wanted to point out is the number of students who've taken the exam. It might appear to people when they look at it that it has gone down, but it really hasn't statistically. It's just the amount of students in the 11th and 12th grade during those years. So we, like I said, we're doing great, all the APs. The number of students taking them is staying the same, if not getting a little bit better. And the number of students getting three or better is staying the same as well.
Or, or in, or increasing.
Yeah, so you guys are doing a really good job.
Well, Diana's put such an emphasis, as you all have, on taking APs. I mean, go back to years ago, the numbers on the left hand side of the chart, I mean, you're up dramatically in the students taking the AP, the APs.
Actually, when you consider that these, this, this data is only six, really a span of six years.
Yeah.
And we had 117 AP students taking 210 tests in 2011. That wasn't that long ago. And we now have 195 students, or last year, 220, taking well over 400, 427 or 458 tests. I don't even know what word describes that.
Well, what describes it is being the third year in a row on the seventh annual AP honor roll.
There you go.
By the College Board. So three years in a row.
Do other people get a three years in a row? I remember the second year in a row, we were delighted last year.
Three years in a row.
Which is, you get on the honor roll for not just your scores, but for increasing access to AP for students. So that's, that's a, that was very key to us. And I know it's certainly been one of Diana's main goals as principal, is increased access.
And I think that we offer many AP courses and if the students have interests, we also try to explore, you know, and try to see if we can offer them. Or we can do it through virtual high school. So we do offer a lot to the students.
I bet we have a couple AP students around here.
Yeah. Okay, and the SAT ACT, again, we're doing phenomenal. The one thing I just wanted to point out is it's changing a little. They, they redid the SAT, the format and so forth. So that's why the evidence-based reading and writing, it's a different, it's 574 this year. And we don't really have a comparison, even though they, they score the same and all that stuff, we're just, we're not sure why, you know, such a huge jump. We have to see how it goes for a couple of years. But the, you know, it's always been the 526, 527, but this year it's 574. So that is just amazing. So we're hoping that that's going to be a trend, but I don't know how to, I don't know, I'm not sure yet because we don't have a benchmark in order to compare it to. And then math went up significantly. Okay, that was a huge jump. And ACTs, we're still trying to get more students to take the ACTs. We, we're increasing every year, but we're still not where we, we should be. We really want all juniors to take the ACTs as well as the SATs. And we're finding that when they do that, our numbers are better and they're also able to reap the benefits from taking the ACTs, whether it's higher than the SATs or use the score in lieu of their subject tests. So, because I was struggling a little still with our juniors, we still want them to take the ACTs, but not all of them do.
Can I, I hesitate to interrupt frequently because I know this is usually a long presentation, but this might be a good time for me to ask a question that I was thinking of a few minutes ago. So we talk about all the different ways that we look at student preparation, student success, not just MCAS. And we often hear about teaching to the test. And so it's great to see those MCAS results. And in the back of my mind, I was thinking, I wonder if you all as educators feel like, you know, yeah, the results are great, but we're spending an awful lot of time making sure they're ready for the test and getting these great results. But then I get to this chart, which I think differentiates from what you could be teaching to the test, right, by looking at SAT scores? And they too are up dramatically. So am I drawing the right conclusion to think that this demonstrates that we're not just teaching to an MCAS test, but we're really accomplishing that while preparing the student overall intellectually?
I think so. I, I think, you know, we're working really hard to teach them skills and critical thinking skills and problem solving skills in math, not, you know, you're going to need this type of problem for MCAS, you're going to need this type of problem for SATs.
Yeah, I'm going to go out on a limb. I don't hear anybody, I don't talk about teaching the test. I don't hear any of our people talk about teaching the test. I think our general philosophy is that if we've got the curriculum right, and we've got it aligned, and we've got the standards sufficiently rigorous, and we've got instructional practices and methodologies that we believe are effective for a broad variety of types of learners, whatever the test is, it'll take care of itself.
Right.
We actually don't pay too much attention to what the test is going to be, knowing they will be tested. But we just feel if we're doing the right thing by students that however we're judged, whether it's SATs, ACTs, MCAS, Legacy MCAS, PARC, they'll do well. I think that's, that's the way we talk about it.
And I don't hear that term, teaching to the test, a whole lot anymore like we used to, what, five, six, seven years ago?
Well, we know, yeah, but I'd say here, and I think there's a resistance to it here. That, that's not, that's not what's best for kids. That's not what we do. We deliver an effective, rigorous curriculum with high standards using effective instructional strategies.
And I would say that even from my experience at the Ahern over the last 10 years now, and now working with elementary teachers, that we, you have to acknowledge certain things with standardized testing. It doesn't look like our everyday learning that is for lifetime. We need these measures. And so we're really looking at taking these standardized tests, these high stakes tests as a whole different genre. And so we look at it within a genre of giving the students the tools so that they can be fluid in demonstrating their proficiencies when it comes time for taking the test.
Like how to take the test, especially you'll hear Amy talk about the shift to online testing. Those are tools, skills that kids need to have, how do you navigate it online? But that's, that's more like, you know, how, how do you do it? It's like how to pick up a pen and put it to paper. Now how do you pick up, you know, that? But that's, that's not, I think, how the media would describe teaching to the test.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, this is great results. Let's go.
Okay. Okay, I'm just, we just do phenomenal all the time. I'm sorry. But we, we have 90% of students that go on to two or four-year schools. We always have a couple of kids that go into the military, a couple of students that go into the workforce. But this is a school that most of the students go on to a two or four-year college.
So we had 93% this year, which is, I think, our highest ever. I think, a few years ago, we celebrated 92, but I think 93 is the highest.
It is.
That I remember.
Yeah, so it's great. And people, the kids from grade nine on, they have in their mind, they're going to college. It's not an all of a sudden. So we just prepare them for college and I guess that we have a huge percentage that goes on.
And I think too, just as far as a shout out to the guidance department, the group guidance that they have that takes place and how they build that curriculum through group, group guidance, starting in freshman year up through senior year, you heard at the Teaching and Learning Highlight, opportunities that we're now doing for kids to be able to go and visit schools that they might not be able to visit with Joe O'Neil and with Laurie. And so there's these other ways that we're trying to be creative to provide opportunities for students to maybe think about a place that they hadn't thought about before, or even whether it's a two-year, a four-year, just other opportunities.
The Naviance is unbelievable also.
Isn't it great?
That, that encouraged them because they're like putting things, like building a resume for college.
Exactly. And they start that right in grade.
Thinking all in that direction, which is unbelievable.
Yeah. That's a great tool.
It is a great tool.
Is there any mechanism of how to follow, what percentage of that 93% actually does graduate from the two-year or the four-year college?
It's interesting because there are some programs out there, there's an expense to them, you know, even adding it to.
Oh, absolutely.
And Naviance. And it's, I'm hearing that the statistics are not totally accurate because you're going to be sending out information to the students and who replies is where you're going to get your data from. So if a student's not too successful, are they going to reply? I'm not sure. But that's our problem. We haven't found a program that is going, we think, will give us true data.
Or if they take a break. Some kids that like didn't make it the first year, they take a year off, then they go back.
Yeah, because I always wanted to know, exactly.
But how many, actually, sometimes it takes five years to go through a four-year.
Exactly.
But how, because they're, they're saying, if, if people reported that back, you know, they, they might be disappointed. So I just wondered if we've followed any of that for our particular students.
I would love to. I just haven't found something that was going to give us true data.
True, right.
That's what I'm worried about because right now it's self-reporting. So the students would be the one giving us that information and what percentage would actually respond. You know, so I'm not sure, but that would be great. Because even transferring, like how many students transfer.
You still finish.
Yeah, yeah. But if transferring might take the five years. And so is that a bad thing? Not necessarily and so forth. So it's just how to interpret the data and get the correct data.
Well, and some, some data fifth year, which includes a master's degree.
Exactly, exactly.
But that's a plus.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. So, so currently, no. The answer is no. We don't have anything.
What we need is time and money, right?
So when we look at high school, we look at how we're measuring ourselves. We have the state performance, the standardized test. We have the others, the ACT, SAT. In addition to that, we have so many other different measures that take place on a daily basis. And then, as was talked about before, I think by Sue, there's the common assessments and teachers coming together and to calibrate to look at how the different classes that are taking the same course and what that looks like. So that constant communication and with the departments being in line with each other, there's a lot of other data points that we look at to make sure that we're meeting the students' needs that are in front of us and at the same time that our curriculum is aligned as we go forward. So we're going to shift and we're going to look at the grades three to eight. MCAS next before we get into our other district benchmarks. And I want to spend a little bit of time, especially for those that might be watching at home, to really talk about the difference here in this new MCAS. So just to, to think back, so the MCAS was put into place about 20 years ago, 1998. And when the MCAS was first administered, it was only administered at, looking at fourth, eighth and 10th grade. And as the years went through, we started adding on other years to the, where after No Child Left Behind came through, then we were assessing students every single year. That MCAS is now replaced with a next generation MCAS. And to actually get to this point, as you'll recall, we administered the PARC assessment for the last two years. So we, we don't even have MCAS data to compare to for the last two years. And even if we did, it's not comparable. I can't stress that enough, especially for parents at home, myself included. When I get my own child's MCAS scores and looking at that data, you cannot compare it to the previous test. It's a very different test. It's a much more rigorous test. It also is measuring differently and where our standards for a grade level, we're measuring that grade level content, we're really looking towards college and career ready, meaning are we preparing our students for the expectation of the next grade level? So it really has a different purpose and I really want to emphasize that. Because where your child may have been with the PARC, there were five levels when we looked at being proficient or, or meeting the expectations, or MCAS even years back, advanced, like we looked at the high school, are proficient. Your child may have been proficient in the past and they may, on this next generation assessment, be partially meeting expectations. That's not surprising due to the nature of the test itself. So that was not a surprise. And we're also going to talk about some of the other pieces that were not a surprise to us, some things we've talked about here. So it is replacing a 20-year-old test, the Legacy MCAS. Now some call it MCAS 2.0 because it is administered online. For the test itself, it really is measuring the critical thinking skills for students. It's looking at that application of knowledge, not just the knowledge of those standards, and really looking at the connection between reading and writing and being able to apply that thinking critically. It is designed to be on the computer. Our students in grades four through eight took the test online last year. Our third graders took the test on paper and pencil. So when we look at the data, we're going to be looking at our fifth graders for the first time, that, and fourth grade, they were fourth graders taking for the first time online. This spring, we will have all grades, grades three through eight, taking the test online. And then we will see with, in 2019, the grade 10 MCAS moving to online and also moving to a next generation assessment. If you look across the state here, 60% of schools in Massachusetts took the test on computers. However, when you see that greater than 93% in grades four through eight, that's the state's push to get districts ready to see that they're testing their infrastructure and to see that they're able to administer online. So when you see that 93%, that was just grade four and grade eight, where we in Foxborough tested students, grades four, five, six, seven and eight online, unless they had an IDP to where it was not to be online and they needed paper and pencil. But again, spring 2019, that will change. The idea behind that is we want to make sure that our current freshmen have had an experience with taking the test online and have had an experience with that much more rigorous test, the next generation. So they did as eighth graders. So in the past, as I mentioned before, the PARC that we had the last two years was five levels. But if you look at this comparison, it's comparing to MCAS because it was four levels in the past. Just would like to call out the difference. We've talked about advanced and proficient on the Legacy MCAS and then needs improvement and that warning, those four categories. For grades three through eight, that's changed. The, the advanced is now really exceeding expectations. And that's looking at those students who performed at a level that exceeded the grade level expectations and mastery of subject, of the subject matter. The meeting expectations, they met the grade level expectations and they're academically on track to succeed in the current grade level. But again, the purpose of this assessment is really to look towards their readiness for the next level. Partially meeting expectations, it's, they're partially there. They're meeting grade level expectations in some areas, but still there's some work to do. And you'll see there in red that it says, "The school in consultation with the student's parents or guardians should consider whether the student needs additional academic assistance to succeed in the subject area." I'd like to call that out because I think we do a really good job in Foxborough of identifying our students who need extra support, whether it's staying after with teachers at the high school, our academic support labs, working with teachers after school at the other levels. We have the math specialists at the elementary level, the reading specialists at elementary, middle, and then again, the academic tutoring here at the high school. So we disaggregate that data and we are able to look at scores to see if students that were partially meeting expectations, were they close? How close were they? And that's a really important data point that we're looking at when we look at every single student who took this assessment. How close were they, those that weren't? Is it a curriculum alignment? Is it an instructional piece? So we just received the scores in October, which is much later than what it has been in the past. So we're digging into that data at, at the very root cause level at this point in time. But it's important that those four levels are different than they have been in the past. And again, if parents open up their child's report and they see partially meeting expectations, we don't want anyone to panic or to get worried at this point because this is a new test. It's a new baseline and we really need to take it for what it is because it is a much more rigorous test. And it was online, which brings in a whole nother dynamic to this, especially when we look at the writing and keyboarding and such.
I actually like the partially meeting expectations designation better. I think the old terminology needs improvement, feels like, ugh, I need improvement. But partially meeting expectations, I think is more accurate.
It celebrates the success along with the, the pointing to the areas that they, that
they made. And you know, for some kids who have significant disabilities, that may be doing really well and be very close to be, to meeting expectations. So I just like that terminology a lot better.
And understanding that this is truly a benchmark year that's measured, measuring six grade levels from third to eight. There's a real difference there when you look at that span from third to eight. And so with that being a baseline year for all of them and the numerous variables that Dr. Burdos mentioned inside of that, you know, third grade had, took it as a paper and pencil test, fourth grade and eighth grade across the state took it online. But our fifth grade, for our fifth grade, and I'll speak to this in just a minute, this is the very first time that those fifth grade students took this test online. But that's not true for all students who are in fifth grade across the state. And so there are so many variables that, as Amy had said, it makes. And so there are so many variables, um, that, as Amy had said, it makes it sort of hard to compare here. But we'll talk a little bit about what lies underneath our ELA numbers in just a minute.
So this is just a color band of looking across those four levels. And it shows a, a sliding, um, scale, if you will. And this is important when we look by grade level and by content area. Again, to see how close was a particular grade level or a group of students as we're, um, dissecting that data to look at meeting expectations or exceeding. And we'll mention this again at the very end, just with some parent resources that are helpful.
Okay, so we'll start here with the ELA, um, for grades three through eight. And if you just take a minute and look at that vertical black line down the center, that represents 50% of, um, our Foxborough students across grades three through eight. And the color bands, um, represent the achievement level. So the blue is those students who are exceeding expectation, the green who are meeting expectations, the yellow partially, and the red not meeting expectations. And so really quickly, if you look at our grades three and four, um, they are at 50 and 53% um, across the district respectively for meeting and exceeding the expectation. Um, and then if you look across grades five through eight, they're slightly below that 50% mark. And we need to acknowledge the grade five in particular because that falls, um, lower than we had hoped, um, it would show. But there are several things we know about grade five. And we just pointed out that across the state, great, fifth graders last year didn't all take it online, but our Foxborough students did take it online. Fifth grade, we always see as a dip year with testing. We did back with, uh, the legacy MCAS back in the day as well. And, um, that's a transition year for students. So that's another variable that we have to sort of take into consideration. But as Amy had mentioned a little bit ago, and we'll see it on the next slide when we get to the, um, comparing to the state, um, is that, that long stretch of yellow, uh, that is those students partially meeting. And so that's our next line of drilling down, um, as you had mentioned before, that which of those students, you know, we, we look at these numbers initially, but there's more of a story beneath these numbers. So we're starting to look at students, our Foxborough students by name. Which of them really are close to the cusp there in terms of making it into the meets expectations? And we have seen some of those numbers and we still have work to do because the, the results did get released later to us. And we'd like to have, uh, a lot more time certainly to analyze these results. But we have already laid eyes on tangible numbers where we see those students are right on the cusp. And so knowing this is a much more rigorous test and knowing that there are different variables, it's benchline data, I think we're really, um, on the verge of doing some good work with the information that we do have here. So if we want to take.
You know, can I add something? I know that you've mentioned the challenge of suddenly we're taking it all online, which is just a completely different format. And I know you're not going to belabor it, but interestingly enough, in today or yesterday's Globe, I can't remember because I was reading both of them this morning, what's called, there was a letter written into the Globe by a recently retired elementary school computer teacher from another district. It's like, I took a screenshot, that's why I'm looking at my phone. It's, and he said, um, the title was, "Computer Interface on MCAS Poses Obstacles for Students." And he goes on to say, "Regarding the drop in scores on, across the state on their redesigned MCAS test, elementary students are scoring lower on tests because they're taken on a computer. Especially true for younger students," I'll paraphrase, "in the essay portion where we measure two things at once, their ability to compose and their ability to type." Obviously they're very, uh, separate things. "I've seen students with three or four paragraphs written on this scrap paper run out of time trying to type in the computer. What does that test truly measure?" "Students who are also handicapped and computerized tests by years of conditioning," this was interesting, "playing computer and video games where speed is of the essence." Like how many zombies can you, blah, blah, blah. Teachers may well warn, and, and that doesn't transfer well when taking a multiple choice or, or the written portion of the test. Teachers may well warn students to take, to take their time, and he goes on to talk about it. And, um, so I thought that was an interesting comment is that how students are used to, how they spend most of their time when they're on a computer. They get better at those skills, but they may not translate to the test-taking environment online. So just something to think about. I thought it was interesting and timely for us.
You know, I, I would just offer Sue and, and the rest of you, I, I don't think you have to drill down too deep into all these because to me it'd be premature to draw any real conclusions for all the reasons you said upfront.
Absolutely, absolutely. But actually, um, Debbie's point is well-taken too when you commented, um, through what you just read about the whole essay piece. So that's the one piece that we really can get some information. It does behoove us to take what information we can get from these results, baseline or not. And, um, so what was sort of glaring for us across grades three through eight, regardless of the difference in their individual grade level results, is that there's some need when it comes to addressing the writing anchor standards. But as Shannon had pointed out in her report from the high school, uh, after coming out of a year of the ELA program review, um, in 2016, 17, we, we were sort of ahead with our recommendations, um, ahead of this data. Um, in that we know that we've got some work. Teachers have articulated that they have more need in terms of developing their proficiencies and their skill set in writing for multiple purposes, across multiple genres, um, as we see through the standards. So, um, it's great to hear teachers saying that, the data certainly supports that. And so we have a plan for that. Our recommendations say that we want more formal and embedded professional development. One of the things we've already done is have our, uh, John Collins Writing Consultant come in. He came in during the October Professional Development Day. That was a choice, uh, day, so teachers could go to lots of things. And we had teachers from elementary, middle and high school participating with him by choice for the day. Uh, so I thought that was really a great testament that we've, we sort of anticipated the path from some data we had collected last year. And, um, this just sort of re-informs us about that work that we need to do. As far as the essay piece, um, it was, this is the difference sort of between the third and fourth grade results and then the five through eight results. So the text-based essay is a type of question that is on the ELA test, uh, across grades three through eight. Um, they, all of these grades also have selective response questions, but it's only grade three and four that have constructive response. The five through eight don't have constructive response, however, they have many more points, um, assigned to them for text-based essay-type questions. And so if this is an identified area of need that we're not performing as highly as we would like to and grades five through eight have that higher possible point, uh, value associated with that, um, question type, then I think that really, um, suppresses the overall number and it's one possible explanation for that.
For the, for the essay, I know for my students doing it on the computer, they're used to like filling up the pages and doing it. For the boxes, the box kind of grows as they write.
Yes.
And that was really confusing for them.
So that's one of the tools we spoke of, that we actually have to orient the students with that tool. Because you're right, they do see that this is the box and that's what I feel, but they need to understand that it grows. And they need to have some time with the tool so that when it's time to actually demonstrate what they can do as a reader and, and a writer, that they can handle the tool more fluidly, for sure. It's a great point.
But it does give them to accept, like, when the box grows with them, you know, when you see a piece of paper and you know you've written it down half, you clearly say, I need to write more. But when the box is growing with the essay, as it's constructed, it can fool you into thinking you've written in enough detail to, to your point. And, and it can fool you into complacency, saying, oh, good, oh, my box is almost full. Where if you saw it printed out, you'd say, oh, holy moly, I need to write more. So it, I think there's so many nuances to it that, that go into it.
Exactly.
When we look at the math three to eight, and again, if you're looking at those color bands and at that 50% line, we can see, um, more than 50% there exceeding or meeting the expectations. And so then we, we look at the things that we've done. We've talked a lot here with the guided math model and the resources of professional development that's gone into math over the last several years. Um, and when we look particularly at grade eight, that is something, when we look at the ELA review and we see that, okay, this mirrors what we kind of expected based on the results of that. When we look at grade eight, we're very happy to see that because we know how much has been put in prior to grade eight and it really goes back to number sense. And students really having a much better understanding and competencies in math and that builds to grade eight. And when we get to grade eight and look at that, um, even in comparison to the, to the state there, you can see it, we're significantly above in that area. And where we have taken grade eight standards, where some districts have gone and had algebra in grade eight and we have algebra in grade nine and really making sure that we're addressing the standards because the algebra is not the same algebra that it was in the past and spending much more time on that critical thinking and reasoning, we're seeing the benefits. It's not just this year with this new rigorous test. We were seeing that, um, even in other areas too. So that's validating for us, the work that's been there because there's been a lot of work because we needed to put work in that area. And so we're seeing those benefits, but again, I think it comes back to having that number sense and really being able to reason and think. And even on the OECD, when we talk about that piece, it's a cumulative effect. And when we can have students have a much better understanding, then they're able to really problem solve in a different way. So again, just to, to reiterate here that, um, the meeting expectations here is different. It is a, a new test, it's a new baseline. It is not the same MCAS that was here before. It is a signal for us as educators to really look at students readiness for the next grade level and ultimately college or career ready. So if parents are looking at their student's scores and if they see that they're partially meeting expectations as an example, look and see how close they were to meeting the expectations. It's really important to really look at that. There's information on those parent, um, pieces that go home as well. So parents receive an, oh, um, a kind of a four-page piece here that has the scores on the front. It has that band on the inside to show how close they were to the next level. But then importantly, it will go down at the bottom and give information within reading, within writing, within language. Is, is there an area of strength? Is there an area of challenge there? Same thing within math when you're looking at that. You can look and to see if it's a matter of expressions, um, equations, or is it geometry? Or is it number sense? And to see where their strengths are or where some areas that you want to pay a little bit more attention to and to work with your child's classroom teacher. But again, a very different test than what they've had in the past. The science task for grades five and eight is that legacy MCAS, it has not changed. The other part here to keep in mind is Massachusetts is transitioning with the new standards. We chose to fully implement the new standards, waiting, instead of waiting and having this transitional plan. So in 27, 2018, still they're overlapping the standards. We've talked here before, I won't belabor that point. But the important piece is that before we had standards that were in grade spans, three to five, six to eight, and where we decided to emphasize those particular standards could vary from district to district. We now have grade level specific standards that change some of the units, even at the elementary level that teachers taught. But as a result of, they've done this slow transition. But in Foxborough, we chose to fully align to the new standards, even though they're not being assessed until a 2018, 19 school year. But with that being said, you can still see across those trend lines in grade five and in grade eight that we're having some, um, some nice trajectories in that area, particularly in grade eight. And that, again, we know that it's the work of many, not just grade eight. So reminders for home, um, is that, that legacy MCAS will continue this spring. But in the future, it will be given online. In 2018, 19, all of those standards for science, although we fully implemented them, they'll be fully assessed with the MCAS. When we look at ELA math and science, it still is a graduation requirement, will continue to be a graduation requirement. This spring, our 10th graders will take paper and pencil, they will take the legacy MCAS. However, the next spring, our current freshman, the class of 2021, I think about my own daughter being a ninth grader, so it's easy to remember for me personally and thinking. It changes for her. So if you have a child that's a freshman, they will take the test online in 2019 as a graduation requirement. The other piece is that every school district will be piloting this spring. Um, one, either reading or math with a class of students to start to help the Department of Ed prepare and to look at those questions and to see as they start to calibrate those questions in anticipation of all students taking them in 2019. So we will have some piloting of that this spring. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like or who, but we've also been told that it will not interfere with our regular testing window. And then as always, paper-based tests will be available for students. Um, if they have accommodations that require that, I think that's really important piece to remind parents of.
So I know that when, you know, we put in the packet, we continue to show year to year to year to year results just for our own, you know, record-keeping. But I know that the state, and I, I thought I saw it on a slide somewhere, but I'm not sure. I know the state is saying, because it's next generation, it is a, a different version of an old test, if you will, um, that you're, we're supposed to consider the 2017 results the new baseline and that you're not supposed to compare it to the old MCAS or the, even though we can track it, but you're not to, to consider that they're the same thing. You can, it's considered a new baseline in 2017. So really it's what happens in the future that will tell us how we're doing on the next generation tests.
So parents would have received, um, a letter last week when the MCAS results were sent out to them that have these resources there. But just as a reminder, if you're wanting to look at different, um, more specific informations, available right on the Department of Ed website. And again, that reminder that it, it's really emphasizing critical thinking and problem solving. This is the piece that's there as well on the website, but it's within those handouts that came home with each child's report to look at that information. This is what I was speaking to before, you can look specifically, this is a math example here and, and looking at operations and algebraic thinking to the, um, performance on each of those strands to measurement data geometry to see, was it something in geometry, you know, that would have been the area of challenge? And then any other information, um, that they have on the website, we also sent home to parents, which were frequently asked questions. We included that in the parents packets that went home with their students', um, results as well. And then there's a parent guide that's available. But as always, if you have questions, contact your child's teacher or the school. And as Debbie was mentioning, it really is a new baseline. Schools, there are, um, there's the accountability results for schools. It's starting, it's a paradigm shift here. We're starting at the beginning. So as we talked about MCAS, that kind of closes that piece up because this last piece that we wanted to look at, were just some of our own internal measures that we use because it really is, um, all of the information that supports our teaching and learning.
Right. So at the middle school, our grade five through eight students take the SRI, which is a Scholastic Reading Inventory, which is an online assessment, computer-based. Um, and fifth and, um, fifth and sixth grade teachers typically, uh, have elected to dipstick in and do an administration in January just to track students' progress further. But, uh, we ask them to do a, a fall and then a spring, grades five through eight. And so we're reporting on those spring results here. So, uh, if you look at the grade five results, where 90% of students met that, um, benchmark, um, that's sort of out of line with what we saw from MCAS. But again, the, the tests are purposed very differently. So the SRI, um, is not a, a great diagnostic tool, it's not meant to be a diagnostic tool. Students read passages, they answer multiple choice questions, that's how that goes.
It's meant to be like a screening tool.
It's absolutely a screening.
So that if, if you don't do well, then we're going to look more closely at you in other ways.
Exactly.
It's more like a general population screening.
Which makes it a great tool initially in the fall for teachers because they can look at other, uh, sources of data they have. And so I call SRI the great cross-checking tool because we never go to just one assessment point, um, one data point. And so it's a great cross-checking tool when we look at other systems we have in place for assessing students' reading performance. And so that was kind of nice to see that jump up for our grade five students. So in terms of their actual reading performance and where they're falling in real time, uh, they appear to be doing very well with that. With grade six, there was a slight dip down there, but it's, you know, certainly well within being attainable out to that three-year benchmark goal for fall 2019. And seventh and eighth grader certainly on track there. So nothing really surprising there for us and nothing alarming. Um, we're able to predict those results, um, reasonably, year to year. And so the developmental reading assessment, the DRA, is administered in kindergarten in the spring and in grades one through four in the fall and some of those grades in, at an interim mark, and then everybody else in the spring as well. So we're looking at last spring's data here. And, um, again, I think, I think it's reasonably predictable. I know we have, um, a slight dip here in the, um, the grade one data. But I really account for, in, in working with teachers, um... with teachers, over the course of this year, and talking about it, watching teachers administer the DRA, having conversations at grade levels and with the elementary reading specialists who work with teachers closely as they administer the DRA. We are in continual cycles of recalibration of the DRA. And so, sometimes, we may see a little bit of a dip, but oftentimes, that just has to do with the need for recalibration. It's a standard administration of this assessment, which is an observation-based one, but it's not a standardized test. So, there's, there's the role of the human being here, because of the observation.
And student populations change.
Absolutely. They absolutely do. And so, I'm not, we're not alarmed by that, but we'll continue to recalibrate to make sure that we're using this tool the best we can. It's the single best diagnostic tool we have here, because it shows us what our students do as readers, how they are strategic as readers, and at what levels they're performing as readers, so that we can dynamically and flexibly group them to give them what they need in the moment. So, that's different from any other assessment piece that we have. And the last piece is our kindergarten, little soundbite here. And so, one of the many pieces of data that we collect in kindergarten is around their ability to name uppercase, lowercase, and the associated letter sounds. And so, if you look at way back and go all the way to where we are now, we can see that 96% of kindergarten students in the district have proficiency with recognizing the uppercase letters. And those numbers will always be higher. You can see them. Uppercase letters are the ones that students are most familiar with, you know, right out of the chute. And then, they come to recognize the lowercase letters, and then finally, generating the sound that those letters make, or in some cases, the sounds that letters can make. And that would include the vowels over time as well. So, we continue to be on the right trajectory, and that can totally be accounted for our systematic training and implementation of the Foundations Program a few years ago, which really gave teachers the vertical alignment in terms of phonics for grades K to two. And so, we're very proud of those results. And actually, as we were speaking today, we're recognizing that those numbers are starting to hit the ceiling. And so, there may be a little bit of wavering, but they're going to be around the ceiling there. And the beauty of that piece is, and certainly, we have full-day kindergarten now throughout the district. So, the implications here are that level, that increased level of readiness for our first-grade students as they're entering, which we typically have referred to as the year they learn to read, which so many, of course, are coming ready so much earlier. So, it's exciting news. Forward progress on that.
And I think it just speaks to the data that we look at, all the way down to the level of, the level of identifying letters. So, just wanted to end here with some highlights here, where we are almost 25 years here on Ed reform and moving forward. So, when we look across Massachusetts, Massachusetts, number one in the United States in reading and math, as measured on the NAEP, the nation's report card. That was in 2015. The top scores in the world in reading on the PISA, the International Assessment, in 2016. Number one in the ACT, as far as scores in the nation, in 2016. And number one in advanced placement success in the country in 2017. So, again, we're in the most high-performing state in the country. We have the most rigorous standards in the country, and then, we also have rigorous assessments that are here. But then importantly, when we look at Foxborough, too, and again, multiple measures here. As we mentioned before, it's the third year in a row that we've been named the Seventh Annual AP Honor Roll by expanding access, and again, improving and having high performance there. And then, even most recently, on the OECD test for schools, which was the PISA-like test that we had, looking at those results, where we were able to look specifically at Foxborough in, across comparisons, with not just the nation, but the world. And I just thought it was really important to come back to and to reiterate here, that it is the work of many. But Foxborough is significantly above the nation across all three of those cognitive tests, in reading, math, and science. And that, when we look at our average score, we're above the top 10% of students in the United States in math and science. We're right there, close to the top 10%, and in reading, in the top 25. So, as we have multiple measures for all of our baseline and benchmarks from this new generation assessment, that it really is the work of everyone, as they start with identifying their uppercase and lowercase letters in kindergarten, all the way through.
Can you go back, too, because you just mentioned the baselines and benchmarks for math?
Oh, I skipped over that one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry about that. So, here's another, so, our math assessments, when we look at kindergarten through grade four, and having our baseline there, we look at those results from this past year. So, we can see our three-year benchmark. So, we're right in line with, if we're not already exceeding that average, when we look at 2017 scores. But again, that's the importance of having that three-year rolling average, because any one particular year, we can see fluctuation. So, in 2017, we can see that we are exceeding across all of those areas, except for kindergarten. But again, it's looking at multiple years, but it's just another way of that we're assessing, and we're seeing some nice results there because of the work that's been put in with guided math.
I think it's important for people at home to know that we assess informally within the district, informative assessments, as the high school does, along the way in math, you know, periodically throughout the year, and then at certain benchmarks throughout the year. And then, we track that, so we know how we're doing. We don't just rely on the MCAS or whatever it is.
Right. Okay. Thank you for, I didn't realize I jumped over that. And the other piece, too, is Allison Mello, who's not able to be here. She's specifically still on the agenda for this item, because this is all the work that she's been doing with teachers.
Great.
Any other questions?
Amy, just the reading there. I mean, I know, everything you went through was so fantastic. The reading being not quite as fantastic, still fantastic, not as highly fantastic as math and science. Does that present an area that we go focus on next, or?
I think we already are, to the point of the ELA review. We weren't really surprised, especially when it came down to the writing, the recommendations that came out of that, from the data that we looked at, from the teacher survey. So, even that qualitative piece, it really came out, really, it was blatant, to be honest, that we knew that that was an area. With writing, that's why you've already have a plan in place with the professional development. And we are able to drill down, as Sue was saying, as far as those essay pieces. Aside from it being online, we know that what we're asking students to write and respond to, is that that's some work that we have to do, and that sometimes, when you focus on a particular, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of focus in math. We needed to have that focus.
In science.
And, and a lot in science as well. And with the changing of the standards, we have to remember, we have new standards again. So, it's looking at that. It's drilling down into that, but looking at multiple measures. And they are informing each other.
Yeah.
So, we are aware, and we do have a plan in place, and we're working on that.
I know, I know all our principals are here, and Dr. Ryan Silver's Special Education Director, so I want to thank him for being here to support the results. But I think they would agree, and please, please weigh in. But I think, you know, you've heard from the department heads and the coordinators, we have so much thoughtful work going on in the departments, at the high school and in K to eight, that it's so thoughtful that when, when we see something we know we could do better on, we own it, you know? And I think, I think that's what I'm most proud of, is the depth of the thoughtful work that's going on across the district. It doesn't mean we don't have areas to work on, because, you know, that's, that's why we have jobs.
Well, as always, that was very extensive, and a lot of data crunched through and summarized. Matt, Kendall, we do this every meeting, usually deeper than, no, I'm just kidding. Any, any other comments or questions from the committee?
It was just a very thorough presentation, as always. I really appreciate the amount of work that went into it. And I, I think our kids are doing fantastic. I really do.
Chris, any perspective as a teacher, beyond what you've already talked about?
No, I mean, I agree with the whole English part, that new test, and it's, you never know if it's just the two days that they're taking it and all that. It can be a million different factors, and I wouldn't worry too much about those scores.
Debbie, former teacher?
You're doing incredible job. Thank you. Right from the classrooms. And I particularly like the way you turn and you thank everybody from kindergarten up. I worked once with the head of department who took all the top, it happened to be Spanish classes, and would, would, toot his own horn, and said, "My student, my students, my students." So, finally, the other three of us kind of just, and what about, we had to gently remind him that there had been other teachers before they got to the level. And you always, always take the time to recognize that and praise that. Thank you.
And I'll just close by congratulating you and thanking you as a parent for what you're doing for our kids. You know, this makes me think about at the last meeting, when our results from another test showed that we are providing an education quality that's above many of the private schools. And I think this further backs that up. And I think that's a very proud moment for a public school system. So, we'll have to, you know how my marketing mind thinks, we've got to think about how, how to keep positioning this in the community, especially as we enter budget season. But the results are outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, principals. Principals are terrific.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Instructional supervisors.
Yeah, so far as APs are concerned, I have a lot of friends who go to private schools, both in-state and out-of-state, like Severian and like LaSalle. And they don't have the HS at all. So, all of those APs that we have access to, they don't have access to. And then, in school, their AP programs aren't as extensive. We're allowed to start earlier. Some of them aren't allowed to start until their junior or senior years. And the APs that are available, like, they'll have like 10, whereas I don't know how many we have.
Eighteen or nineteen, I think, now? Eighteen, nineteen APs, something like that? I think last time we counted, we're very high.
And even when my, like, I'm the youngest in my family, and even when my brother and sister were going to high school, they didn't have the access that we have today. I think, like, the most they took in a year would be like three, whereas now, there are students taking like five. So, I think that's really good.
Do they sleep?
Um, hardly. They, yeah. But I just think that's really good.
I'd say in addition to that, it also really says something, that a public school can be on par, if not better, than a school where every student's dropping a college tuition amount of money in every aspirant, from education, to music, to sports, and where, at least from a student's perspective, we're really on par, if not better, than most private schools in the area with that.
So, we should send you that. We did that two weeks ago, the international test results.
Oh, yeah, you should get it.
Called the OECD Test for Schools, which is out of Paris, France. And it showed that Foxborough High School students aged 15 do better than almost every country in the world, except a few, in math, science, and reading, and better than private schools in the United States. So, we'll have, Mr. Gracia will send that over to you. But it's really, really a good read, and we're very proud of that. First time we've had, any high schools had the opportunity to get individual high school results. And we bravely went forward and decided to do it, and.
Glad we did.
Yeah, glad we did.
Also, like, the different tests, I think, inform each other. Like, you know, I think the more access you have to APs, and the more success you have in APs, the better you'll be on. You know, the ACTs and the SATs, and that starts, you start cultivating like that exposure with the MCAS, and you're in third grade, with that standardized testing. So, I think it makes sense that all the scores are like consistently high, just because you start that experience really young. So, we're lucky to have that here.
I'm glad you see that. And I think one of, in addition to bringing us your input, you can take back some input, too. And one of the things you can take back is how much focus we're trying to put on instructional quality. And, well, you see it. But we don't do that every week. I'm careful. All right.
Just before we move on, did we tell our new members, who are contributing so well to this meeting, their very first meeting, that they, if they have homework in their AP classes and they need to leave, that they do not have to stay until the bitter end of these meetings?
Or if you have.
We should make that point.
That's okay.
Fortunately, you caught me on the one night. I don't need to do that.
Maybe during like midterm season, we'll have a different, like, perspective.
Or major music rehearsal or.
We understand.
Thank you.
Good point. Okay, social-emotional learning fall update.
Yes. So, as you know, we completed our year-long study of our social-emotional learning programs and services in the district. And we presented that report in June, and told you about all the things we're going to do, all the recommendations that came out of it. It was a great learning experience for us. So, we thought we would give you a fall update, and of what was happening now. And you'll probably get a, I don't know, either a three-quarter year update, that will be up to somebody else, or maybe an end-of-the-year update. But I think we were pleasantly surprised when we started putting this together, working with principals, what was happening in buildings, what was happening in special education, what's happening district-wide. And I think we were all pretty proud of how many things were already happening. So, it just goes to show the seriousness of which we take our program reviews, that we finish the report, we all talk about it, and then, school starts, and the principals and everybody else just starts doing things that we know we want to do. So.
And Debbie, if people are new to this topic.
Yes.
Social and emotional learning, that's a term that you could say applies to everything we do in learning, right?
Pretty much.
So, does it have a specific meaning for you as a superintendent that you're looking for?
That's a great question. Yes. It's a combination of a few aspects. Number one, how do we develop good citizens? How do we develop kids who have coping skills with all life's challenges that come? I think the sixth-grade team was a great example of how we develop decision-making, confidence, communication, collaboration, but also, you know, ability to manage stress. When there is conflict, how do you handle it? How do you problem-solve? So, it's one thing in that you want to develop that positive citizen and that confident student that can face multiple situations in personal or school life, and have a skill set to be able to do it. The other half of social-emotional learning programs are when kids are disregulated, or when they're stressed, or when they have mental health issues, when they have anxiety. And we have, we have seen a rise, as you, as you've heard, in students who have social, emotional, or serious mental health issues at all levels, elementary, even in high school, and more than ever before. And it's growing every year. It's a challenge that any school district across the country would tell you, and certainly in Massachusetts. So, this idea of, you know, how do we better meet the social, emotional, and mental health needs of students, it's become a focus for the Superintendent's Association for the last two years. So, what we're experiencing is mirrored elsewhere. So, that's why we undertook a study of ourselves, if you will, rather than just keep adding layers and, you know, it's like making soup, "Well, let's throw this in, let's throw that in." We underwent a comprehensive study of what do we do? Does it make sense what we do? Do we need to stop doing some things? Where are gaps? What could we be doing better or differently, or, or how could we fill in the gaps?
So, one way to think about it for someone new to the topic is, we're not just focused on teaching core subject areas.
Right.
We're also interested in teaching social-emotional learning skills, competencies.
Competencies, yeah. Social, yes. Social competencies, really, is what, is what they are. And I think, you know, times have changed since we went to school. It was about, you know, sitting in class, doing your paper, getting a grade, and then getting a report card. And it's so complex now. I've said that often at this table. Education is so complex today, more than ever before. And this is just another example of the complexities. Then, and schools are expected to solve most of the ills of society, if you will. But we also know that we should invest in it, because the child who is not socially, emotionally, or mental health aspect-wise being in a good place, they can't learn. So, we often talk about, you have to be available to learn. You can be present in school today, not available to learn. So, we know that if we, if we can shore up those social competencies and the development of those skills, that we'll have a student that's ready to absorb more of the teaching and learning that we have available.
Thank you.
So, that's why it's important. So, lots of stuff happening now. So, we call it happening now. And when we collected this, it was still October. So, we're only in the second month of school, and we had a huge list. So, you know, Amy and I will speak to the specific things. District-wide, we've, we came out of that review saying, Think Kids is such a powerful program out of Mass General Hospital and their, their department there. And we had had training for everyone, but it was the preliminary training. We know we need to do a better job with really more in-depth and embedded training for how do you actually apply the concepts of Think Kids in it. And Think Kids, I think Sandra, but Think Kids is something that our Special Education Director wanted to implement. And it's really been, is she, are you still here, Sandra?
Yep.
Oh, you're, oh, sorry. You're behind somebody. Hi. So, compliments to Sandra. So, that's been really powerful for us, but we, we acknowledge that it wasn't fully implemented or fully utilized. Because when you come up with different techniques, you have to practice them. So, we're going to practice and embed the professional development and how we handle that. And the Think Kids concept is key to a phrase we've used here, where we're viewing behavior, poor choices kids make, or behavior more as a skill deficit, rather than, you know, just needs punishment. Because suppression of behavior is not going to have a long-term effect for that child or for the classroom. It's really more about, what's the skill deficit? So, if they're not. So if they're not, if they're not at grade-low expectations for reading and math, we have no problem seeing that as a skill deficit which needs to be made up, and really, behavior and social choices aren't any different. So we're trying to view it more from a developmental lens and do it that way. So we have more advanced training in the summer, a three-day training that Sandra arranged for eleven people. We have a deeper implementation of Think Kids district-wide. So Mass General Hospital is providing our ongoing professional development. And that includes going to specific places or groups or teams in schools that want more specific training for reasons we won't necessarily get into, but that we well know, we're going to say, we'd like somebody to come in and help us with this type of situation. But our, our classroom teachers are also having more Think Kids conversations, and they're critiquing opportunities for using Think Kids with video. So putting you into that situation, what would you do? What would you say? How can we handle this better? Amy's team arranged professional development on October 6th, which was customized based on building base needs in particular. So the second one is how we're looking at it through a skills deficit approach, and the traditional model is, you know, infractions and consequences. So there was, but I think when we explain this, it can come across that, you know, we're not disciplining or we're not applying consequences. We're still applying consequences and disciplinary procedures according to the student handbooks. That has not changed. But at the same time, we're not, that's not going to be enough. We're going to look at what's lacking in the child. Can we impact that? Can we get that child to a better place so that the next time they're forced, they're confronted with a decision, maybe they make a better one? All right, and that also fits with the philosophy of the growth model, which we have talked about here for many years, that, you know, the power of yet, I haven't learned it yet, I have lots of places to grow, and I'm not going to count myself out. I know I can grow into those skill sets and those competencies that I'm going to need to be a successful adult in the real world. Our elementary mental health team is really aligning their mental health guidance lessons with CASL. You've heard Amy talk about CASL before. That's a nationwide collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning, and they kind of are the biggest experts on, on social, emotional learning and what best practices are. Jump in anytime.
Well, I think too, when Debbie was talking about those competencies before, CASL, it's looking at the relationship skills, it's looking at self-awareness. It's those skills, and they're also looking at how we embed those in our standards. So if it's something like perseverance in math and not giving up, what does that look like? The power of yet. It's embedded within academic, but it's really more about building some of those skills in order to be ready for learning, aside from the relationship skills, the self-awareness kinds of things.
So we have mindfulness training for teachers and, you know, stress reduction. When we say mindfulness, it's it's stress reduction, how to handle anxiety, all of those things going on in all three elementary schools in regular classrooms. So the next one I want to really spend some time with the school committee on. So we've talked a lot about the things that stress kids out and the things that other districts are doing. So we're going to start, I'd say this is forward-thinking, but it's a cautious version of forward-thinking. As an administrative team, we've convened the last couple of meetings, and we've talked about what can we do to ease some of the pressures that kids experience, because life is changing for them. So we have decided that we would like to institute homework-free breaks during logical breaks.
Thank you.
I was going to say, I'm sure you'll be able to weigh in on this. And we want it on, we're going to, we're going to start, and there may be more in the future, but we're going to start relatively conservatively, which is the expected times, Thanksgiving weekend, December, February, and April school vacation weeks. During those natural breaks, there will be no homework, no homework, K through 12, with the exception of long-term assignments or projects that have already been assigned in advance. So it could be due right after you come back from the break, but if you've had a long-term assignment, if you're a procrastinator, you will be doing homework over that weekend. You know, if you're not a procrastinator, you've had plenty of time, that's fine, but no assignments just for that period. And that is going to begin this month with Thanksgiving. So if school committee supports that, we're just going to go to town and we'll be announcing that. What do you think?
Oh, I'm a huge fan.
I mean, I can, at least starting off with like, the ones that aren't included here, I understand on some extended breaks, like, teachers are obviously going to want the students to be doing what they do, and that's schoolwork, and I completely understand that, but on things like Thanksgiving and Christmas, from a student's perspective, having to worry about a project the same time you're getting to see your family for what could be the first time in a couple of years is not something you want to have to deal with. So that's, thank you for, as on behalf of the FHS student body.
We haven't passed.
I'd also say,
Better be on your best behavior.
Looking forward, if this is something that's like going to be instituted for this year in falling years, there, especially in September in the fall, there are a lot of Jewish holidays, like right in a row, and I feel like, like there aren't that population, like, we're predominantly like Christian town, so I feel like, like, I celebrate those holidays, and we do get homework on those days a lot. And so what happens with that is you can say that you have a celebration that night, and the teacher will say, oh, yeah, that's fine, but then you have to like make it up the next day. So then you're just doubling up on your homework for the next day. So you're like, well, I might as well just knock it out tonight, like really late at night. So I think that that's already passed for this year.
We have policies and procedures for dealing with that. I see Mrs. Myers-Paclo, we do, and I think the challenge is that there are other religions as well present in our community, that, that if you look at statistically, you know, where our community is, is becoming more diverse, there are, there are other religions that celebrate other holidays. So if you, if we were to have a blanket, you know, any holiday, Christian, Jewish, or else, there won't be any homework assigned, that's quite frequently throughout the year. So we're trying to find that balance, because, you know, we don't, we don't have a policy that we don't assign homework on Christian holidays either. You know, so I think once you start that, it can be, it can be difficult. So, and we do acknowledge that there are families that, that celebrate lots of other holidays that aren't, that are neither, you know, Christian or Jewish. So, so I think once you start, if you were, we were to start down that road, it becomes quite complicated. So I think we, we do advise our teachers as to how to handle it, and the students do not have to do the work then. But if we were to try to parse out all the holidays, I don't know where it would end, because there are a lot.
I totally understand that.
Yeah.
I thought we had, years and years ago, when Chris and Yuka came on board, we had the policy, because we also celebrate the Jewish holidays, and it's just as big as Christmas is for the Christians, and it's a very, you know, it's a very important holiday. And I thought there was no tests on that those days, I believe.
Is that correct still? Yes.
Okay, there's no tests. Okay, but there was homework, because I remember my kids had to make it up.
Yeah, right.
It is written in like staff handbook, so it is, it is understood. And, and, you know, so that's why you see our suggestions for homework free are not built around anyone's religious holiday.
Correct.
They're built around natural breaks in the school calendar, so that you can have times that you, you know, can relax and be a teenager or be a kid, be an elementary kid, and have some relief from the constant anxiety of homework and things always being due. But it's not built around any kind of religious calendar.
But Christian holidays are on the breaks, the big ones.
Well, not during February. Thanksgiving isn't religious.
No, I'm saying like Christmas and Easter are, so that's what her point was.
But Easter, this is not, no, but Marilyn, you're missing, Easter is not in within these weeks. This is, it's Thanksgiving weekend, non-religious. It's the December winter break, which has a couple of types of religious holidays around that. February is not religious, and April school vacation is not religious. So that's why we went with that. So it's natural breaks, religiously neutral.
Correct.
Okay, so we actually would like, it can be a consensus of school committee, that's a good direction to go in, because it does, it is, it does sort of become policy-ish, or it speaks to policy. You have, not necessarily that it has to be written that way, but we'd like to try it this year and see how it goes.
Anyone have any concerns with that?
I know.
No, I fully support it.
Consensus achieved.
Okay, consensus.
Do we have to do anything, I, 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 or nothing? I think it's fantastic. Anything that gives kids a little bit of a
Family time.
A buffer.
Yeah, a buffer.
And provides some more time for families to spend together. Our kids are so busy and doing so many different things.
More and more all the time.
That it is hard to carve out time to.
I'm just missing that the school committee free something, something.
You'll have to take that up for yourselves.
Thanksgiving weekend meetings canceled.
See, gave you a thought though, didn't it?
It's making me think, yeah.
I know. So anyway, you can see some other things that we're doing district-wide that were also, just like Think Kids, we're beefing up our training for caring school communities, which has existed for about, oh, I'm going to go with about eight years now in the district. It's been a great program for us, K through five, but, you know, like anything, we'd like to give it a little more oomph and make sure it's consistently implemented. Amy and her team have offered, and Dr. Einzel, how trauma affects learning, which we call Trauma One, and then there's advanced course Trauma Two. Those have been fully enrolled every time we offer them, because more and more we're realizing that kids do have trauma in their lives, and it does play out in, in the academic environment. And so, you know, and it is a little understood area prior to the last couple of years when you've been offering it, and we fill it like that. Dr. Einzel's arranged, we have consultation with McLean Hospital for our guidance staff, and we're developing a process to deal with students who have school avoidance issues. We're seeing that a little bit more and more because of anxiety and stress and other things that are going on in kids' lives related to trauma. So that team is putting together, we're busy at work in the last couple of weeks, in our conference room, working on that. Rather than, you know, rather than treat each case individually, we're trying to understand school avoidance a little more clinically and putting some things in place that can help, so that we have some guidelines around that. You know, you heard about LSDO, it's local, it's a consortium of local school districts that actually started way back in the nineties, believe it or not. That Foxwell, two other districts started it, but now it's got about twelve, thirteen, fourteen?
No, we're close to fifteen.
Districts that all participate and share professional development, et cetera. All right, so we have some individual school-related things. So at the Borough, there were more consults going on with the Guidance Council, once per cycle, you know, for students and teachers. They had a staff workshop on Brain Gym after school for people to go, so that's even extra beyond what we do for PD, because Michelle's staff was very much interested in that. It's, you know, my influence. IGO also has added consults with Guidance Councilors once per cycle, setting some minimum expectations for caring school communities and how often the, the classroom meetings take place, et cetera, for the first eight weeks. They established, you know, every once in a while, we have schools who try out something new that the other schools can learn from, and they're all good at that. Each school has its own flavor, and one school want to try something, and the others love it, like it. So the IGO right now is trying out best behavioral, emotional support team. So we have teacher assistance teams that look like academic data and sort of process difficult cases, or, you know, academic difficulties that students having that they want some team input in, and now they're starting to do that for behavioral and emotional support. So we'll see how that goes. Whole staff Think Kids training for the whole school again, and we have a new counseling model at the IGO, because it is the bigger school. So we were able this year, as you know, to add the .5 Guidance Counselor, just to make it equitable. So we'll have a full-time counselor, as we always have at Borough and Taylor, and now we'll have one and a half at IGO, which, if you look at the proportions of caseload, it's now equal, or equitable, equal-ish. Again, Taylor's setting minimal expectations for caring school communities. They have a Growth Mindset book club, so they're reading the Growth Mindset and studying that together professionally, and they've also had very specifically tailored Think Kids training for their faculty. The Ahearn has a huge list, increasing communication between the guidance and classroom teachers. The guidance is now meeting with targeted groups of students during the school day who may need help developing more coping skills or reduction of anxiety in, in general and in the school setting. Our mental health teams at the Ahearn are presenting to teachers on current issues and approaches to those issues. We've already talked about Second Step and the revamping of Second Step. It says seven and eight, but clearly you saw grade six. There it is, the next bullet. The school psychologist is having weekly meetings with teacher teams, like they are doing at the IGO, to process difficulties within the social, emotional realm, if you will. And this is new. We are, they're starting after-school clubs with the guidance staff that focus on mindfulness, coping skills, and stress reduction. So I know you traditionally will think of after-school clubs as activity-based, you know, hobbies, sports, chess, whatever it is, and now we're seeing that kids really would like to go to a club that helps them deal with their issues.
How many Guidance Councilors are at the Ahearn?
Three. Guidance counselors, three.
Three. Any adjustment counselors or all guidance?
The, well, the guidance and adjustment, actually, most are dual certified, but they're both. We have social worker, one and a half school psychologists. Pretty comprehensive team. The high school also has a pretty list. They've revamped their team program, which is a therapy, team program is therapeutic program for students with social, emotional needs. That's been revamped. They revamped the mental health team, and they have a new name. They started last year called SWAT, Student Wellness Assistance Team. Everybody likes that title.
Debbie, sorry to interrupt. Do you have any more details about that particular one?
Which one?
The second one, the one you just read, the mental health team with its new name.
Yes.
Is that part of our traditional health curriculum? Is it something outside of our traditional?
No, it's outside. So Diana can come up, but while she's coming, we used to call it our RTI team, you know, to, how are we processing kids in tier one, screening them in, screening them out, and doing it. Instead of calling it RTI for behavior, we're now calling it SWAT, where they're
Say it, say it again. It's the
It used to be called our RTI Intervention Team, but now it's called Student Wellness Assistance Team, and they, they work in small professional teams, doing case studies, basically.
Really, the tier one is our building-based support team for students, and that's made up of two teachers, a guidance counselor, and an administrator-ish person who bring kids forward. Just if somebody's having a difficulty in class, somebody sees that there's a drop, whatever it might be, we're all assigned to a particular class level. And then from there, we offer support to the staff to say to the teachers, have you tried this? Maybe you might want to try this and come up with a plan, kind of as that first level. Is it only one teacher that's seen that this is happening in the classroom, or is this happening in multiple classrooms along the way? So that's kind of our first tier. But our SWAT team is actually, we meet on a weekly basis, and it is our, it's our social worker, it's our guidance counselors, our nurse comes in, our social worker, adjustment counselor, if I didn't mention her, our school psychologist, the administrators. I think I have everybody. And we meet on a weekly basis with students being brought forward. Some are just kind of on a watch, because there's a plan that's been put into place, but they're kind of at that next level of need, and, and/or who's new, and what do we need to do, and what direction are they going to go into? What's the plan? Who's in charge, and how's that going to kind of spread out to get that information out to whoever needs to have the information, and then also that reporting back what's happening. Is there movement? Is it a positive movement that's happening, or do we need to do something else?
So that students we have a concern about, they don't fall through the cracks.
It could be really anybody though, too. It could be a student who's coming back, let's say, from a hospitalization, an injury, a concussion, and, you know, what's happening with that individual? Are we still seeing major symptoms and signs? Are they caught up? It could be somebody who's just a touch base that one weekend, you know, they're off the grid and moving on and everything is fine, or that student is just having ongoing. So anything from the social, emotional, really to the health, wellness, and physical side of things, too.
Are the students involved in the meetings also, or it's just all their teachers?
It's not, well, it's not that, it's the support staff in the building who really is involved, and then it would go out to teachers, but yes, for a student, for instance, any of the concussed concussed students that we have, it's our nurse who follows up with them on a daily basis to see where they're at, as far as, and she's also the liaison to the teachers, as far as work is concerned with the student. So the student will check in in the morning, I'm not really doing well, I didn't do well last night, whatever was really bothering, you know, whatever was happening with them as far as their, their brain and how that was impacting them, and then she'll relay that information out. So, and then, yes, and then guidance too would meet with the student. You know, the student's not out of it, because it is directly impacting them. And it could be something as significant as they are going to go into the team's program for a bit of time, because they do need that support as a touch base to go into as well.
Thank you.
I don't want to make this a long interruption, and we, so, so it's not my intent, and we can talk about this another time, and it may not even fit under this category, but, you know, one of the things I've been thinking a lot about lately is, in contrast to our academic strength, you know, we're a small town, and we hear a lot about what goes on outside of school, and I know it's not our, within our control to control or even attempt to control what goes on outside of school. And we've talked about that before. But I, I worry about some of the things that you hear. You know, it's a small town, there's a lot that's going on. I know it's an age when kids like to experiment and do things, and that's part of growing up. But it's just something I've been asking myself, could we do better helping provide direction or guidance? So I just didn't know, that's, that's what's in the back of my head. I didn't know if that would fit here potentially, or
I'm going to speak generally to it. I think that sometimes it's a gray line. I think we've had many cases we'd say that. But in general, I think it can be hard and challenging, because it's not our job to parent or to police the parents, and we have to be very respectful of that. It's, and people have very, many different parenting styles, many reactions to when they make decisions, so it's not our job to parent kids or to tell parents how to parent.
That is their right as parents. Our role is if we become aware of something that could affect the classroom environment, the academic environment, then our role is to then investigate and see if there's anything we need to know because it is impacting school. The law says if we, that if it's not, if it's not something that's impacting school, it's really, we have to, that's, that's where the line is for us.
That's a good differentiation.
Yeah. If, if we believe that something we know or found is impacting school, then, then we will get involved appropriately. But it's not our job to, to make decisions for parents or to try to figure out, try to get information and deal with it if it's not our purview.
Agreed. And I know we do a lot already in this area-
Right.
-that falls within that guideline you just described. So, it's just something in my mind as I read about this and whether this could continue to play a role, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, Diana.
Thank you, Diana.
Okay, and then last, at the high school, the school psychologist and the speech-language therapist have been starting, has started to present to staff on social skills behaviors, how to handle unexpected behaviors, and how to model examples for classroom teachers. Special education, we've strengthened, through Dr. Einzel's, strengthened district's connection to McLean Hospital outreach, so they now have monthly clinical conferences with the high school and middle school staff, with their psychiatrists and psychologists. As it bears repeating, we're seeing more and more mental health and dysregulation, emotional dysregulation in students. We have a trauma expert that consults to our team programs as needed. She has widened our consultant base to include a psychologist with expertise in autism, so that when we have a student who's still struggling or we haven't quite found the right plan, that we can have an expert come in with, that's, you know, maybe a broader range of expertise and ask us to, ask to look at our plan and comment and make some recommendations. She's been working with the South Coast Collaborative for ed assistant training on professional development days and their role in supporting emotional health, and continuing to work with consulting neuropsychologists on those types of, those types of cases, and providing brain training for the preschool staff, because that's really important for young learners. So, I think, I was really proud when we put this together because first I was just pleasantly surprised, we're doing so much already, and we're very action-oriented, and I think that shows it. But I'm also proud that everybody is represented here, our principals, our central office of administration, special education, you know, we're all involved and we're all getting to the business of improving what we offer for SEL. So, I thought it was a pretty robust fall update myself.
Any questions for Debbie or Amy? No, it's hard to argue.
Is there any needs for our Guidance Department for next year? I know we added the .5 this year, is there anything else?
I think still out on the table, I'll do Diana a favor here, I guess she's smiling, she knows I'm going to say it. I think out on the table is, do we need another, I'll just throw out, I'm not sure what it would be, say another half of a social worker at the high school? Because we've got one social worker at the high school, and, so should we have a separate social worker or partial social worker for the, for the classrooms that are therapeutic who, you know, pretty much are involved with that type of thing on a constant basis? And the other social worker deal with just general population-type issues? So, I think that's, I think that's the only question mark in my head, is whether we need a little bit more of social worker-type assistance and supports at the high school. That just came up at the end of last year after we were through with the budget, but I think it's a real issue. I don't know that, you know, you'll see it, I don't know. I think that's one of the things we're going to be looking at as we develop the budget either, I don't know how, but you, you probably will see it for your consideration.
Good question.
I predict.
Sue, you have three Guidance Counselors, a psychologist, and-
Three Guidance Counselors, one social worker, 1.5 school psychologists.
And your population is just a little bigger than the high school.
Yes, it is. Just a little.
It's just a little.
I, I use that word, I chose my word very carefully.
I was thinking that.
Yeah, and the high school, but, I mean, if, you know, man for man or woman for woman, it's similar because they have four Guidance Counselors, one school psychologist, one social worker, so they're at six.
Oh, so we have four, one and one.
They're at six, she's at five and a half. So, it's, it's actually very similar, it's just what do you need and what mold you might maybe need a little more of.
If you guys want more, you can arm wrestle. Anything else for Debbie on that? That's a great update, and all in two months.
That's it? People are working hard, very proud.
Okay, just a couple more topics tonight. Fourth reading of our policy on domestic violence leave. This is a policy we've been waiting to secure some legal guidance on.
Correct. So, I think we have a definitive answer.
All right.
I know you've had a couple readings of this already, so your school committee attorney would like the language that you see in yellow, and as you, if you recall, just in case people are not up to speed with this, when the School Committee Association sent it, in this section it said, "The school committee should decide whether the leave is going to be paid or unpaid." So, it really is a local, the policy is the policy, but the local decision about what benefits somebody who wants to take advantage of this policy for, what benefits that you make available to them, that's a local decision. So, this is the new section. It says, "Use paid leave first. An employee seeking leave under this section shall exhaust all annual or vacation leave, personal leave, and sick leave available to the employee in that order prior to requesting or taking leave under the section. Contractual family sick leave must be used if an employee is out to care for a family member who's a victim of domestic violence." So, that really spells it out so that people know what's to be expected and what days they'll have available to them. And the other change is, it's a good thing you took a closer look, he said the reference you have at the end that was sent by MASC is incorrect. The correct reference is in blue, sorry, in yellow, Mass. Journal of Laws, Chapter 149, Section 52E is the correct legal reference.
Okay, so I appreciate you summarizing what we learned, and before we go further, does anyone want to read this, or would anyone like to make a motion that we waive the fourth reading of this policy?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion?
It's about forty-fourth time for Chris Lee.
All those in favor waiving the reading of the full motion? Okay. So, are we ready then, from our policy subcommittee, are we ready to approve this? Do you guys feel comfortable?
Yes.
Yes.
And add it into the policy manual? Is there anything else you guys want us to discuss, or you feel like that covers it?
That covers it.
You all set?
Yep.
And I think it's timely, it needs to get into the manual and be posted.
It used to be part of the family medical leave, it used to be a subservient member of it, and now it's just called out more succinctly, so, and it's, now this is in concert, the use paid is in concert with the other policy that is very similar, so I think you're in good shape.
All right. Well, then, if there's no further discussions, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the new domestic violence leave policy, file GBGE.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of adding this motion to our policy manual? Unanimous. Great. Well, we drug that one out, but I think we feel better that we have a good understa- at least I feel better, I'll speak for myself, I feel better, we have a good understanding and, and thank you for getting the legal opinion on it. Okay, then moving right along. Dr. Burdos, you recently led an assistant superintendent search process.
Yes. Well, actually, I had a lot of help-
Oh, you did?
In this, yes, I did. So, and I'd like to first start off, but by kind of giving a timeline and thanking some people, such as Marilyn and Tina, who served on the search committee to replace my position. So, just to look back as far as the timeline, the month of September, the posting was out, and that closed at the end of September, and then we had a committee of thirteen, as far as representing school committee, it was Tina and Marilyn, thank you very much for serving on that committee. Sue Abrams, is she still there?
She is.
She chaired that committee, so Sue, thank you very much. And then also, we couldn't have done it without Dr. Einzel, who was on that committee. Also, Michelle was on that, Diana. Sue Forrest represented literacy, Shannon Wazaluski from the high school as a department head, Kristen Durico as a classroom teacher from the high school, Julie Abrew, middle school teacher, and then Janet Pasetti as far as an elementary teacher. And then we had two parents that represented Danielle Brennan and Margaret Hasman. So, we thank them very much for their time. Their time was really, I think, that when they first started on the committee, they realized that it was, it really was a lot of time. We are a destination of choice, and we had a lot of applications. So, they then started in October and had a couple of meetings where they screened all the applicants, and there was a lot of work to be done there. And then interviews took place after that. They had a couple of evenings of interviews where they then moved forward, three candidates for a second round of interviews, and those were completed last week.
Amy, what was the total pool roughly?
Forty-nine applicants. Forty-nine applicants. And I'm very excited to be recommending Ms. Allison Mello as far as to replace my position as Assistant Superintendent. You know her well from all of the work that she's done here in the district. She's an extraordinary educator. She has worked tirelessly with teachers and students and administrators in this district, and as you said, we had forty-nine applicants that came forward, and there was a lot of, a lot to look at in as far as the caliber of people that are applying to a position such as this, and she really rose to the top with what she presented, the work that she did, as well as the couple of interviews that she had, and the background that she brings to the position. She has teaching from grades four to eight in math and science. She was the math specialist at the middle school for a couple of years. For the last eight years, she's been the K-8 math-science curriculum director. She has presented at both state and national conferences, she teaches graduate-level courses, she has received a number of different awards, but most importantly, the work that she's done right here in this district with her aspiring teacher leader group and the other teams that she works with, with teachers at all levels, and then even bridging with working with the department heads through her K-8 curriculum director role. She really is an extraordinary educator, she's dedicated, and she always puts students first, and that's been very evident in the results that we've seen here. And the teacher, she's a go-to person. She's well-respected, she is knowledgeable, and she has the, the personality to be able to pull people together and to work and to get things done, and really, again, the best interest of our students and high, holding them and herself to high expectations. So, I was very excited with the committee who they put forward. It was good interviews that I had with the three candidates, but it was very clear that she is the person to continue the work that we've done here in this district and continue to move us forward, and so she is who I am recommending for the position of Assistant Superintendent to you.
Any questions for Amy or any of the members of the committee who are in the room?
Well, not only does she, when I looked over what was presented to us, not only does she push other people to become, rise to their best, she herself is going to complete probably this May her doctorate in educational leadership for herself. She's pushing herself to become better also, and I think that's extremely commendable, so hats off to her, and early congratulations. We'll have another doctor to keep you in line.
But she doesn't want to be called doctor. What do they call her at the school?
Mrs. Marshmallow.
Yeah, we're going to call her Dr. Marshmallow. That's what I told her.
She may want to rethink that.
Never a doctor. So, I just wanted to say some nice words about her. I've worked with her since she began her career at the Foxborough School System. I've been on boards with her, I've worked on Exchange City since the inception. She's innovative, she thinks outside the box, she's always looking to go forwards. She works collaboratively, I came to speak tonight, with her teams, which I've seen firsthand, and we are going to have such a dynamic leadership once again if we all agree to this. It's going to be another dynamic duo.
Other thoughts, Chris?
I've said for most, a lot of positions, that I think the best thing to do is to promote from within if you have a qualified candidate, and we definitely have a strongly qualified candidate for this, and I think it sends the right message to the staff, it sends the right message to the town, and I'm very excited.
Why, why do you feel that way? Just curious.
Just as a teacher, I think if somebody from the outside comes in, if the school district's not going in the right direction, you know, sometimes you do bring it in, but if a school district is doing as well as Foxborough, somebody that knows why it's doing well, somebody that knows the inner workings of the district, somebody that knows all the teachers, I think that's a huge asset for a school, and it makes everyone else kind of like up their game, thinking that they can get promoted as well.
I agree with that, if the, if everything's working, it makes a huge difference.
Amy, one of the things I was going to ask you as you were going through, but I think you answered it at the end, so, so Allison's name is the name the committee brought forward? Or was that a name you decided upon after the three finalists? Just could you clarify how that?
Sure. So, the committee's charge was to identify candidates to move to the next level of consideration. It was not public at that point in time because it is the confidentiality of the candidates. So, they pushed forward three names who were then interviewed, and then it is my recommendation based on those interviews to recommend her as the candidate to be selected.
Okay, thanks. Well, I know Allison from our work here, and she's outstanding, in my opinion. You know, what I love about Allison is her energy level, her commitment, her commitment, her professionalism. She's presented at this table many times, so we've seen her in action. It's dynamic, it is student-centered, and all the math scores, you know, and talking about how they're K through twelve and it's building on all success. To me, you know, it's a product of many people, but she's been right in the thick of all of that, so, and when I, you know, if you try to find any reason to question, is it the right decision, you know, the only thing I can come up with is, well, it's another promotion from within. But you weren't a promotion from within coming to Foxborough. You know, we looked outside and brought you in. Some of our other principals and leadership members have come from outside, so I, I quickly dismiss that, and I don't even think that would matter. Frankly, I think that's irrelevant, I think the quality of candidate's probably the most important thing. So, I have two thoughts for the committee in terms of procedure at this point, and I'll leave it to whatever you all feel is majority thought, but we can make a vote tonight, which is absolutely fine, or we can wait till Allison's able to join us if you wanted. That would allow potentially public comment back to us as the news gets out that this is a recommendation, if, if there was anyone who had any concern. Personally, I'm okay either way, so I don't know, I offer that to the committee as my thoughts.
I have no problem voting for Allison tonight.
I'd like to do it tonight.
I'll be honest with you. I have no problem if Amy, Dr. Burdos, would like to have Allison here for that vote either, but I, there isn't a question in my mind that, I'm not at all surprised that she's the recommended candidate for the job, and I think she's the perfect person, so I don't have a problem with it. But I can certainly, you know, wait until Allison can be with us, it would be nice if she could be with us, but either way.
I think with the careful consideration of all the people that work on this committee, because it is such a cross-section of people, from administrators to teachers to townspeople, that I'd be disappointed if people wanted to challenge this decision. So, I'm very comfortable with voting this and moving it forward tonight.
I don't see anyone shaking their heads differently.
No, I agree with that one.
Who would like to make the motion?
I'd like to make the motion to accept Allison, the recommendation of Allison Mello to be our new Assistant Superintendent.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero. Congratulations, Allison.
I think-
She's watching at home or shaping it or something.
So, that certainly should make Dr. Marshmallow feel much better tonight.
She'll have a new name now.
She'll have.
I want to add to Dr. Burdos's thanks to the committee who served, my own thanks, thanks on behalf of all of us. Those are arduous tasks, a lot of resumes, a lot of interviews-
A lot of time.
A lot of careful thought, and we've had a very good track record in this district over the last, oh, ten years or so with these appointments, so I think you've made a good choice.
It's a very thoughtful process.
We'll have her come to the next meeting.
It's never proven us wrong yet, Marilyn, since we started working with that.
Well, it's hard to sit here and not say anything.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, let's hear it.
I'm just really proud of what you just did because, you know, you don't, normally the person can be here, and then you decide, it's your decision, and we don't usually have a public comment period, if you will, on the- And we don't usually have a public comment period, if you will, on the potential candidate. But more than importantly about Allison, and I know that others feel the way, she's one of the most talented educators I've ever worked with in my career. She challenges my thinking, and more than that, she's somebody that I, and I would never want to disappoint because I think that highly of her. And I just think you, your future is assured, and the double docs are going to take the district to new levels, so I couldn't be happier. Great decision. Thank you, everybody.
That's our new team name.
Thank you again to all of you for your work on the committee.
It's a good committee.
I like that.
It's a lot of work.
I'm glad you made that. You can tell the investment by those that were on the committee, from parents. We had over thirty parents come forward, and that really speaks to the interest level and the commitment that's there to make sure that we are continuing in the direction that we've been going.
Yep.
So this gives you confidence moving forward?
Yes, it does. I'm very excited for all of us.
Yep.
For Allison, and, but for all of us, the students, the teachers. It's great news for all.
Joe, you have a comment?
When, will the start date for Mrs. Mello be January 2nd?
January 1st.
1st. Even if it's not a workday.
But it's not a workday. January 1st is not a workday, but that's...
Her official day.
Because we're still considered employed, even if it's not a workday, you know, even if it's a weekend.
Good question, Joe.
As, that's the official one for Dr. Berdus, too, Joe. January 1st.
Oh, yes.
All right. Staying on happy news, we have a couple of donations in front of us before we get ready to adjourn.
We do. So keeping in the theme of the last couple of meetings, you have an additional donation of $125 to the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund, bringing that fund to a grand total to date of $16,423.
Motion to accept?
Motion to accept the $125 donation from Mr. and Mrs. James F. Freeman to the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund.
I'll second that with gratitude.
All those in favor? Five-zero. Thank you very much with gratitude.
The second one is an anonymous donation that has actually came... Don't they want to meet up? They don't? Oh, you did speak to them. Well, already then. Is that changed?
No, they said that was going to be 14 dollars.
Oh, okay. So what, well, that's even, it has been in the past, though.
By their knowledge.
Oh, isn't that funny? Well, I don't know how that came about before. That was a misunderstanding?
I spoke directly to the Iorio Charitable Foundation. I spoke directly to the representatives, which happens to be a law firm, with a number of questions because we didn't have a lot of information. As you notice, it's only a two-line letter with the donation. And basically, they outlined that the gift is a gift to be used by the principal of the school in any way she sees or he sees fit to better the school itself, so there's no restrictions on it. We did receive a similar gift last year from the same foundation, and that the, this year the amount is $14,000. And again, it really is just to better the education in any way the principal feels that they can do.
Wonderful. Well, then, let's call it out then. So we would, we would love a motion to accept a donation of $14,000 to the Taylor Elementary School on behalf of the trustees of the Iorio Charitable Foundation.
The which?
Iorio.
Iorio.
I-O-R-I-O.
I'll make the motion to accept the donation with much gratitude of $14,000 from the Iorio Charitable Foundation to the Taylor School.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Five-zero. Thank you very much for the generosity.
Amazingly generous.
Very generous.
Other matters?
Let's have a little one.
Who would like to begin to my right?
I will begin. Mr. Garrity actually has brought a matter to my attention that he asked that I bring up with the committee tonight, and it's very timely.
Is he being shy?
No, he didn't want to use his one question up with this, so I said I would bring it up. Our, we have a, our first meeting in December, on December 4th, conflicts with the special town meeting the same night, so I wanted to bring it to the committee's attention, and perhaps we can brainstorm how to deal with it. We have a meeting on November 20th. There's also another Monday that we could possibly move our meeting on the 20th to the 27th, if that works with people's schedules, and then, you know, we wouldn't meet on the 4th, but then we would have a kind of a meeting in between.
Debbie, do you want some time to think about that and come back with a recommendation based on workload or?
It's merely a suggestion.
Actually, I don't think, I think that's a new one. So the next meeting, instead of the 20th, went to the 27th, and then, no?
But wait a second, isn't the week of the 27th also the week that they're talking about the joint meeting with the school committee?
Not that I've heard yet, but I'm often one of the last to hear.
I thought it was your suggestion that that week worked.
Well, I suggested pushing it to that week. I haven't earned anything in response, but you have, okay.
No, I just asked the question for you.
I think they are thinking that's where you have to be, so that's what they're looking to do.
Joint meeting with...
The finance, the finance outlook.
Annual review?
Review.
Good. Well, that, I do appreciate that because that gives us a little more time to plan.
Sure. Wouldn't you start the budget process with more, Tina? Is that February? Never?
27th is not good for me.
Just send me your numbers, I'll take care of it.
Yeah, that's nice.
So if we keep the 20th?
Yep.
The 20th of November?
I mean, the opposite is that you could combine the two in December into one.
The 11th is...
Yeah, we would.
So town meeting is what day?
December 4th, Monday night at 7:30.
Can we do the following? No, doesn't work.
Or you could, or you could just cancel it.
Yeah.
I mean, the...
The 18th.
Well, because we'll be doing the budget, the last December meeting?
Yes.
December 18th, the last one?
The first budget.
Oh, wait, then I'm onto something. So you'll have your regular meeting on November 20th. You'll have the joint meeting on the 27th, where you'll already be assembled, and if there's something that's timely, that can't wait till December 18th, we could always add it to your agenda for that night. If, if there's something really timely, we need a signature or a vote or something on.
That's a good point.
And then, so you could do November...
Then we wouldn't have to go a long stretch.
Basically, three in November and one in December.
Okay. Good plan.
That'll work.
So make that the tentative plan. If you can't be here the 27th, it's okay.
I can't be here the 18th.
Wasn't on our calendar.
You'll be there?
I won't be here the 18th.
Good. Well, why don't we plan on that? Subject to change.
Yeah, the 18th.
Sounds good. Joe, good point. Thank you.
Good thing.
So December 4th meeting is canceled.
So no December...
But if we're around, we'll be at a town meeting instead. Anything else, Tina, on your list?
Just wanted to congratulate all of our sports teams, our fall sports teams, those that have played in the playoffs and are continuing on, those that have yet to play in the playoffs, like the soccer team that plays tomorrow.
Good luck tomorrow.
There are so many, I can't keep track of anybody. Our cross-country, cross-country, all of our teams have done remarkably well this fall, and I just want to congratulate all of them. I would like to congratulate Abby Hessman, who took first place at the Hawk Championships and was named the Hawk League MVP for cross-country, which is pretty impressive. And she's only a sophomore, so I can imagine what she's going to do the next two years, so, but some really great things happening. Lots of good stuff going on.
I was trying to find a date, but I can't. Maybe our kids know. The October performance of Thirty Plays in Sixty Minutes, the high school theater program, was wonderful. I thought it was great. So there's another one in November. I thought it was the 16th, but now I can't remember, and evidently, I put it in my phone. So I'll be sending a reminder, but everyone should look for that on the school calendar because they deserve a little more of a supportive audience. They deserve more of an audience. I thought it was great, and so I'm going to try to drum up a little bit bigger audience for those kids who work so hard.
Good. So that's it, Tina?
No, I have one more thing. The BIT auction was last Friday, and I was unable to go because I was at Dennis Charmeth High School watching the football team. We're not going to say anymore about that, but I was there, but I heard wonderful things about the BIT auction, and it is always such a wonderful event put on by our, jointly by the Burl, Igo, and Taylor PTOs, and it raises significant funds for enrichment programs at all of our elementary schools. I wanted to thank the BIT chairs for all their hard work because it's an enormous, Bruce has worked on it, I've worked on it, Marilyn's worked on it. It's an enormous amount of work, and I just wanted to thank them for their efforts on that.
Amy and I went, it was great, and it is an unbelievable amount of work. But, and I think I heard a rumor on the way in that they had already surpassed last year before the evening's festivities started, so I think that's true. So I haven't heard the final number yet, but I think they really did very well this year, so thank you to all of those parents who do that. It was, it was a fun night. It was good.
Yes, it does.
That's all I have.
Did you do a silent auction? Did you win it? I'd like to, yeah, briefly say a couple of things about the very interesting, stimulating mask conference. And one aside is Beth Sylvia and her two sisters were both present because their father, Clifford Sylvia, spent fifty years principal, no, first a teacher, then assistant principal, then principal, and finished on the school committee with the result of fifty years in, in public...
Nice.
Yeah, public service. That was great, and the three gals were there to accept, and people who, his award for him, and some of the people in mask who knew him very well were very concerned, is that I hope he's all right. And the answer was yes, he was doing wonderfully. He's working on his bucket list now. So he happened to be for a week in Auckland, New Zealand to get onto a cruise to end three days in Sydney before flying home the day before Thanksgiving. So we assured him that he was onto his other project list after his public service. Highlighted, of course, were the social-emotional things and how much we really have to address that before learning can happen. That was a highlight. Computers, of course, technology is changing so fast. We must equip, I mean, some of the students starting school now will be using technology that has not yet been invented for jobs that have not yet been created. So can we stay here and say, stand here and say, are we preparing these students for their future? So we must keep up with that. And if any of you ever get a chance to hear the Thursday night, the Thursday keynote speaker, Bill Daggett, do. He is, he is so aware of what's going to be coming, so...
I was surprised. I've heard him several times, but he never loses steam. He's always current. He really stays current. He goes and visits industries that are on the cutting edge and finding out what they're going to need, so I have heard him many times over the years, but I was surprised at how current he is, and with new information, that surprised me, too.
Right.
It was good.
So, yeah.
Thank you for representing us. This was a year that I was traveling, and I know Tina was busy, and Chris was working, Marilyn's busy.
And Marilyn didn't get there, yeah.
Thank you, Debbie. We really appreciate it.
It was good. It's good conference.
Anything else, Bev?
That's it.
All right. Debbie?
I, I don't think I have anything. Concert, jazz concerts coming up, a lot of upcoming events.
Yep.
Athletic teams are doing well.
All good.
Amy? I think it's been sad. Yeah? You need to go home and get some sleep. Chris?
Veterans Day is Saturday, celebrated Friday, day off from school. Just find some time to thank a veteran and honor their service.
Good point.
Do we have a day off from school?
On Friday.
Oh, Friday.
I have tomorrow off, too.
Nice.
Election.
Oh, nice.
Nice.
Voting Day?
Vote on Day in Brockton.
Oh, you got a short week.
So you have a Monday and Wednesday, but not Tuesday? Your Monday...
Strange. You'd rather have school.
I've got nothing.
Bill?
Yep, I'm good.
Janet?
All set, thanks.
All set. Matt, Kendall?
Just thank you for including us in this process.
We're thrilled to have you here.
Thank you for volunteering.
Well, thank you. Thank you for contributing so much already.
You both shared.
Please.
And as Mrs. Ballinger said, you know, you guys don't have to be here all the time, and you can be here when you need to be here and when you need to, okay?
Great, thank you.
All right.
It doesn't always run this late. This is an exceptionally long one.
That's good to hear.
I give you heads up so you don't get run nervous out of here.
This is because the system is being so well-handled. I have been here until midnight. Oh, wow. So those days are gone. Those days are, we're, we're...
Not since.
Hiring. We can keep the ship running.
Like a town meeting. It's a good thing.
Anyone care to motion?
I'll make a motion, please, John.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Hi, thank you.